Okay, so basically they're doing the two, we're just here. We hear forty, one hour one side, one hour the other side, or what?
Pretty much it's up to us.
I'll be, I'll be the chairman of the chair.
Yeah.
That's cool. So, uh, what do you think about?
That's all.
And, uh, we can do time, order, I can spend. Uh, what's your question? Yeah, you do. Yeah, I have to, yeah. Yeah, like they're boss. Yeah, I think. Yeah, pretty much. It's, it's ready to go. Yeah, I'm ready to get one. Are they gonna be here, are they gonna?
I'd like to. I'd like to. I don't want anyone with your caliber, really.
You should go out, huh?
Yeah.
I'm not the type to like you.
You'll go hit a small bucket, you'll get plenty there.
I hate to leave you.
Oh.
Good evening. Please stand. Common Council meeting is now in session for Tuesday, March 29th, 2016. Our invocation will be by Karen L. White.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask everyone to please, uh, take off your hats and to bow your heads. Heavenly Father, today's the day that you've made, and we shall rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for giving us this opportunity to come together as council members who take care of the business that you have commissioned unto us. We ask that you give us the wisdom, the direction, to make the right decisions. We thank you for the public, for them coming out to discuss critical issues that impact this city, and most importantly, them individually. We ask everything that we do be done decently and order, according to your name and that.
Yeah, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. This fellow, would you please give a roll?
President Tim Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Preston.
Present.
Randy Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Broden.
Here.
Doctor Varner.
Present.
Vice President Davis.
Present.
Mr. Wardy.
Here.
Mr. Furlitt.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Report on Subcommittee amendments, please.
Report of the Subcommittee on Minutes. To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the March 14th, 2016 meeting of the Council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Motion accepted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
It still matters whichever one you got.
I'm cool.
The Committee of the Hall is now in session. This is a time where we hear the bills that came from the committees, and, um, this afternoon we've had different, um, discussions, and then we all as a council come together to discuss those bills. We will hear from the presenter, we will hear then from committees, from here, then we will get a chance to hear those who are for and those who are against. Before I begin, there's a question that I need to get clarified here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I begin, there's a question I need to get clarified, and that is, how much time should we give to each side from their discussion? Because you wanna make sure we have a long tonight.
That is dictated by City Code.
I understand that. So, it says, um, the City Code 3030, I believe, is that's what we're looking at? Or what is in the correct, half and half?
Each member of the public has the opportunity to address the council after giving your name and address. You each have five minutes. Those that are speaking in favor, after the formal presentation, which is not timed, there will be a timing of the total amount of time that each of the members speak in favor of the bill. Whatever that time is, is then determined. Those that wish to speak in opposition, you then also give your name and address. You have each the opportunity to speak for five minutes. Whatever is, uh, larger, either thirty minutes or equal to the time that the presenters, after the formal presentation has been given, is the time that the remonstrators would have. Immediately after that, the presenters then have a total of five minutes to answer any questions that were raised, uh, and as under the rebuttal section. What Vice President Oliver Davis mentioned with regard to the, uh, after the formal presentation, the council can only ask questions at that time of the presenters, they cannot do comment.
When I was asking about time, I recognized that we have equal time. I'm saying to you tonight, given the, do you want it just to be equal time from that standpoint? Or should we give them hour this side, hour that side? Or what should we limit? Because what you were sharing is thirty minutes?
No.
No, you said.
If the presenters speak for fifteen minutes in favor.
No, I'm not talking about the presenters.
The people speaking in favor after the formal presentation. If that only equals fifteen minutes, the opposition has at least thirty minutes, the larger of the two.
So if they go forty-five minutes?
If they go forty-five minutes, the opposition then has forty-five minutes, so it's equal.
That's why I wanna make sure everybody clarifies, understand. So, I wanna make sure that we all understand, if they go thirty minutes, you get thirty minutes. If they go forty-five minutes, there's forty-five minutes. Okay? So we wanna get all those rules all clarified ahead of time before we make the part. You get five minutes. Um, can I have, um, when we have that section, to the Councilman, um, Kelly, could you, um, time everybody? When they get to that?
I got it.
Oh.
I got it.
Well, who, um, okay, Councilman, uh, Roden?
I did.
Okay, let's get all that out the way. Anything else? Everybody up here, all minds are clear? Okay. All right. Therefore, let us begin.
I'm reading up the title.
Do we have a situation that we need to be aware of?
No, City Code.
No, I understand that, but, uh, just notice that.
No.
Okay, we're cool. Go for it. Um, my clerk?
Bill number eleven dash sixteen, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the South Bend Common Council, amending Chapter fourteen of the South Bend Municipal Code, establishing Articles thirteen, entitled Smoke-Free Air Regulations for Workplaces and Public Places.
Okay. Go for it.
The Health and Public Safety Committee met this afternoon and sent this, uh, Bill eleven sixteen to full council without recommendation.
Okay. Now our presentation.
Thank you, Oliver. Um, first, uh-
Is the point of order, I believe, there's necessarily a second substitute bill that was filed at the City Court?
Yes. Uh, do we need to accept?
Yes.
Could I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
Like to make a motion to accept the second substitute of this ordinance.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? It is now, therefore, you now make your seat.
All right, thank you, Oliver. Um, we'd like to start, uh, by thanking, uh, my fellow co-sponsors, uh, John Wardy, Randy Kelly, Joe Broden, uh, for their support, uh, throughout this process. Uh, we'd also like to thank, uh, all those, uh, actually, everybody who came out to speak, uh, tonight, but, um, we'd like to thank for all the support, uh, from folks, uh, from Smoke-Free St. Joe, as well as the supporters of this ordinance. Uh, certainly appreciate you being here. Um, I would ask, um, sorry, Alkina, is this on? Nope. There it is. Sorry. Uh, I would ask especially from the supporters, uh, regardless of what is said tonight, uh, I'd ask that you please be kind, please be respectful throughout the entire evening. Thank you. Uh, we'll start just with the general overview, uh, highlighting the second substitute. Uh, one change was made in light of a legal opinion, uh, regarding spacing from entrances, windows, uh, and then a second change was made to the implementation date, uh, moving that to January second, uh, 2017. Uh, one thing, uh, that was heard from some, uh, business owners was, uh, that this certainly would be a change, uh, and they feared that it might affect the business. Uh, we want to provide as long a runway, uh, as we can to make sure that, uh, these businesses, uh, remain successful and, uh, have an opportunity to succeed. Uh, general statistics regarding clean air, uh, over fifty percent of the United States population is currently covered by comprehensive clean air policies. Uh, that includes eight hundred and two cities in the United States, uh, that are not covered by statewide bans. Uh, here within the state of Indiana, uh, we have examples such as Indianapolis, Fort Wayne, Bloomington, and Elkhart, and just to note, uh, over seventy-five percent of the sixty largest cities in the United States are covered by comprehensive clean air. So this is certainly nothing new, uh, on a national scale, on a statewide scale. Um, this is something that, uh, has been adopted all over the country and all over the state. Regarding health, uh, why are we here? Why are we doing this? Uh, it's a matter of public health. It's a matter of health for workers, and it's a matter of health for employees. Uh, secondhand smoke contains hundreds of chemicals that are toxic and seventy that are carcinogenic, including carbon monoxide, hydrogen cyanide, and arsenic. Secondhand smoke can cause heart disease, lung disease, cancer, and stroke, and six hundred thousand people die each year worldwide from secondhand smoke. Also, regarding health, uh, and e-cigarettes and vaping, uh, you'll hear a term tonight, secondhand aerosol or ESD aerosol. Um, at least ten chemicals identified in ESD aerosol are carcinogenic and/or toxic, including benzene, formaldehyde, and nicotine, and the World Health Organization, as well as the National Institutes for Occupational Safety and Health, recommending that ESDs not be used indoors or in workplaces. The public health benefits of clean air. Again, South Bend is far from the first city to consider this, and if we do adopt it, South Bend will be far from the first city to implement such an ordinance, so we have the benefit of studying other communities when it comes to health benefits. Uh, for example, a national study of counties where at least fifty percent of the population was covered by a comprehensive ban, uh, those areas saw a over twenty percent decrease in heart attacks. Uh, they saw an eleven percent reduction in pulmonary disease. Uh, when the country of Scotland in two thousand and eight, uh, decided to implement comprehensive clean air, uh, they saw a seventeen percent reduction, uh, for heart attacks and coronary infection, and the state of New York, uh, in just the first year after they passed this ordinance, saw an eight percent reduction in hospital admissions, accounting for fifty-six million dollars in savings. Um, these are numbers, right? These are statistics, um, but it's important to remember that each one of these statistics is a human being. Uh, so for twenty percent decrease in heart attacks, that means there's an individual that did not have a heart attack. Um, eleven percent reduction in pulmonary disease, that means there were many, many individuals that did not have pulmonary disease as a result of secondhand smoke exposure. So, uh, the health benefits are undeniable, um, and we expect to see no different results here in the city of South Bend. Again, clean air ordinances demonstrate reductions in heart attacks, angina, asthma, stroke, heart disease, lung disease, and cancer. Um, research, time and time again, indicates this fact, that if we're able to pass this ordinance successfully tonight, uh, we will see a reduction in all of these areas. We hear the argument that this is somebody's choice, um, whether or not they can walk into an establishment, whether or not they can work in an establishment. Um, I would counter that by saying, we don't allow a workplace to contain dangerous levels of carbon monoxide. We don't allow a law factory to have dangerous levels of carbon monoxide, and we don't allow members of the public then to walk in, or workers to walk in, and simply just say, "Well, you're an adult, it's your choice." We know the health effects of carbon monoxide. We know the health effects of these carcinogens, and we make laws to protect the public and we make laws to protect workers. Economics, another main issue regarding clean air. Again, I'd like to highlight the fact that South Bend is far from the first community to consider implementing such a ban. Uh, we had the luxury of studying countless cities, countless states, countless countries, but again, we're going to focus on cities, uh, that have passed comprehensive clean air policies, and, again, the effects it has on local economics. The research that is cited is academic, scientific, peer-reviewed, and published in highly respected journals. I'm saying the vast majority of research, because there is some industry-funded research, a big tobacco, that counters some of those claims. But again, the vast majority of research, uh, that is out there regarding economics indicates one simple thing: smoking bans do not have a negative economic impact on business. I'd like to highlight one study in particular, the CDC study from, I believe, two thousand and thirteen. It is the largest and most comprehensive study to date. It involves two hundred and sixteen cities in eight states where the city had a smoke wa- smoking ban, but the state did not. So again, a similar situation to the city of South Bend, if we were to adopt this ordinance, the city would have an ordinance, but the state does not provide for comprehensive clean air. Unequivocally, the research states that smoke-free laws do not have a negative adverse economic impact, and in fact, in cities in one of those states, it actually showed an economic benefit. Research in the past two decades has provided clear evidence that smoke-free laws do not negatively economic, economically impact business. Uh, this article in particular cites twenty-two separate individual studies that confirm the exact same research. But more importantly, why we're here today, we certainly want businesses to thrive and succeed, and that should be a consideration, but smoke-free laws improve employee health and they improve, improve general population health, and that's the most important factor that we're considering. Economics, what does secondhand smoke cost our community every year? The Indiana State Department of Health estimates that secondhand smoke in the city of South Bend costs twenty million dollars on an annual basis. There are some common questions regarding this ordinance. The first is enforcement. How are you going to enforce this? Is this enforceable? Um, as I'll state many, many times, we are not the first city to adopt a clean air ordinance. Uh, other communities have had no trouble enforcing, that's because primarily, these ordinances have been found to be self-enforcing. What that means is that most people comply with the law. When a law is passed, people comply. In the city of Indianapolis, for example, uh, four hundred establishments were affected. I believe in the first year, they issued roughly three citations, so to give you an indication, that's a very small amount of citations to enforce a large number of establishments. Again, these ordinances are self-enforcing. Uh, here in the city of South Bend, um, enforcement would be complaining. Smoke-Free St. Joe has offered, uh, to run a volunteer complaint-driven hotline. Again, we expect compliance. We don't expect people are going to be breaking the law. However, if there's some confusion, or one or two establishments decide that they are going to, it will be a complaint-driven process where somebody will have to call, there will have to be adequate evidence for the Department of Code Enforcement to go inspect, and then the department will go inspect. And if there is a violation found, uh, some people have suggested we automatically slap on a huge fine. We're not here to fine businesses. The first, first time will be awarded. We don't want businesses to suffer, we just want compliance. So again, code enforcement will be responsible, they'll coordinate with the police department if those things happen after hours, and again, like to highlight, this can be done by VIPs, which are our volunteer, uh, police officers, uh, but most importantly, these are self-enforcing. Uh, the fire department and St. Joseph County Health Department are also secondary, uh, enforcers, and you all receive the letter, and that letter is on file with the city clerk, um, regarding enforcement. Another common concern is, is this legal? And, uh, have other cases or other communities had their, uh, clean air ordinances overturned? First, Indiana Code expressly, uh, provides municipalities with the ability to adopt comprehensive clean air policies. Um, second, most challenges, not saying they've been successful, but most challenges regarding clean air ordinances have been two exemptions. People have stated that, uh, this is not fair to me, because you've exempted this business, and you have an exempt in mind. Uh, we're making it really simple. We're going to protect all workers, we're going to protect all the public, while they're indoors in South Bend, and we provide no exemptions, that also makes this a more legally sound document. Second, some might cite the, uh, Evansville decision, and say that Evansville's, uh, clean air ordinance was overturned. Um, that was one, because they provided exemptions that weren't distinct enough from other exemptions, and two, because they did not include a severability clause. Our ordinance includes a severability clause, so if, is this challenged, and for some, uh, very strange reason, very small odds about this, but if any provision is found to be unconstitutional, only that provision would be eliminated from this ordinance. Uh, we've had extensive review by state and national experts, including an attorney who successfully defended Indianapolis's, uh, ordinance, I believe, twice. Uh, his name was Alex Will, and he issued a memo, uh, that I shared with the council, and again, it's on file with the city clerk's office. So, for these businesses, we want them to succeed. I'll say it over and over again, we want public health to be benefited, we want people to be healthy, we wanna reduce cancer, we wanna reduce heart disease, we wanna reduce lung disease, but we want businesses to be successful as well. Uh, so some steps we've taken, we've extended the implementation date, again, hearing from businesses, we realize that this is going to be a change. It's a change from what currently exists. Uh, so we've extended the implementation date to January second of two thousand and seventeen. Uh, Smoke-Free St. Joe will speak on this, but they've already scheduled four marketing seminars, uh, for any business to attend that's going through this transition, uh, to learn about rebranding, attracting new customers, things of that nature. Uh, permitting, spoken with the administration, um, if any business is looking to expand an outdoor area, um, the efficient, the permitting process is efficient, um, and they are prepared. In terms of marketing support, Smoke-Free St. Joe, Indiana Lung Association have both spoken to this, and will speak to this again. Um, for bars that are willing to go voluntarily smoke-free earlier than the implementation date, uh, they are willing to provide, uh, additional marketing support, uh, so that's social media promotion, uh, electronic, digital media. Uh, they will also provide signage, uh, for these establishments, and further education on the benefits of clean air. We heard some evidence earlier today, uh, from the city of Elkhart, um, that, uh, the smoking ban has crushed businesses, has, uh, put everyone out of business. I'd ask that you not rely on any sort of anecdotal evidence, uh, this evening, I'd ask that you look at academic, peer-reviewed, scientific research, uh, that takes into account a number of different factors. Um, as you can see, uh, when the city of Elkhart, uh, passed a comprehensive clean air policy, uh, it was immediately before the Great Recession, and Elkhart in particular, I know St. Joe County must hit hard, but Elkhart County in particular had the third highest unemployment rate in the country. In addition, we noticed manufacturing employment during that time, which also can contribute to businesses succeeding and failing. Uh, manufacturing employment had already started to decrease at the time, sure, I apologize. Um, manufacturing employment had, uh, begun to decrease before the city of Elkhart had passed a clean air ordinance, and continued to decrease drastically, and again, Elkhart suffered, uh, the third worst unemployment in the country during that time period. And finally, um, taking a look at the hospitality sector and employment. Employment was on the decline when the city of Elkhart passed a comprehensive clean air policy. Um, the recession took a big hit on, you notice the trend is the si- the same with manufacturing industry as well as hospitality industry. But I'd like to remind everyone, that if you take a look at the graph, employment in the hospitality industry in Elkhart is higher than it was now when the ordinance was passed. Uh, so just like to remind you, there are a number of different factors that influence whether or not a business to thrive, uh, or if it faces more difficult, uh, competitive conditions. And, again, not saying you should rely on anecdotal evidence, but it's easy to find anecdotal evidence that'll, you know, prove one thing or prove another thing, as opposed to consistent, scientific, peer-reviewed evidence. So, just as a little aside, I'll provide evidence of a city called Plainfield that adopted an ordinance in two thousand and seven. You can see, this is their county employment data, you can see that their county employment data went down during the recession. But again, Plainfield's collection of food and beverage taxes has continued to climb despite the recession and the town's ban on smoking in public places. I'm not asking you to rely on Plainfield. Uh, that's anecdotal evidence, it's not scientific, it's not academic, it's not peer-reviewed. I'm asking you to rely on good, solid research, such as the research I've shared with you from the CDC, such as research from respected institutions like the National Institutes of Health. Uh, moving forward, before I open it up to questions, there were a number of questions during committee, and I know we were limited by time, uh, so I would like to address, uh, a number of those questions, and then I'll ask the city clerk if there are any, um, questions that I may have missed. Um, also, I'm going to encourage, and I've already spoken with a number of experts, uh, in the health field, in the economic field regarding these issues, to expand upon these answers during the pro-public speaking. First, uh, again, we'll go back to the city of Elkhart, as we mentioned, uh, I think it's important to note that correlation does not equal causation. Um, ice cream was thought, in I believe, the nineteen twenties, to cause polio, because there was a spike in polio diagnosis during the summer, and what do kids consume during the summer? Ice cream. As we know, polio does not, is not caused by ice cream. Uh, again, correlation does not equal causation. There are a number of economic factors that influence whether a business thrives or a business unfortunately does not thrive. In South Bend and St. Joseph County, we might not have had the same effects of the recession, but bars and restaurants did close. They have closed over the past, let's see, since two thousand and eight, I guess, the past seven years. Bars and restaurants have closed despite the fact that we do allow smoking in bars. Um, it's just the realities of business. Some bars are going to close, but similar to Elkhart, bars have opened. Same in South Bend, bars have opened during that time period. Uh, so again, I'd ask you to rely on scientific, peer-reviewed, academic research that looks at long-term models, um, regarding economics and the subject. Okay. Uh, we had a question regarding a home office, and how this would apply. Um, so this ordinance would, if, if a home is operating as a business, and has employees, and is open to the public, then yes, this would apply. If it's someone simply sitting inside their home, uh, working on their computer, running their own business from their home, this would not apply to them. I'll go back, uh, we heard, I believe it was Mr. Julian and a number of others, say that, uh, research has been debunked, right? Regarding economics, uh, research has been, uh, invalidated. Um, for every ten studies, I guess for every one study, uh, showing a potentially negative economic effect, or just saying that the, um, former economic study was not true, there are ten studies saying that it is. Uh, again, the CD study, CDC study cites, uh, twenty-two, uh, different articles regarding, the CDC study cites twenty-two different articles, that's not study alone. Um, we've shared plenty of other studies, and you can simply search academic, peer-reviewed, study after study, um, demonstrates the vast majority that this does not have a negative economic impact. Let's see. We had a question regarding, uh, casino. Um, the casino, uh, is not, uh, within the city of South Bend, the casino is on, uh, sovereign land, um, and decisions regarding that casino, um, are made by, I believe, the tribal council. I do not know what their final decision is, I've reached out to them a number of times, and I've requested several meetings, uh, to- So, again, I'd ask you to rely on scientific, peer-reviewed academic research that looks at long-term models regarding economics and the subject. We had a question regarding a home office, and how this would apply. So, this ordinance would, if a home is operating as a business and has employees and is open to the public, then yes, this would apply. If it's someone simply sitting inside their home, working on their computer, running their own business from their home, this would not apply to them. I'll go back, we heard, I believe it was Mr. Julian and a number of others, say that research has been debunked, right, regarding economics, research has been invalidated. For every ten studies, I guess for every one study showing a potentially negative economic effect, or just saying that the former economic study was not true, there are ten studies saying that it is. Again, the CDC study cites 22 different articles regarding, the CDC study cites 22 different articles. That's not study alone. We've shared plenty of other studies, and you can simply search academic, peer-reviewed. Study after study demonstrates the vast majority that this does not have a negative economic impact. Let's see. We had a question regarding casino. The casino is not within the city of South Bend. The casino is on sovereign land, and decisions regarding that casino are made by, I believe, the tribal council. I do not know what their final decision is. I've reached out to them a number of times, and I've requested several meetings, to encourage. There are a number of casinos throughout the country that provide smoke-free air, and would like to encourage and continue to encourage, for the benefit of their workers, for the benefit of health in the city of South Bend, if a casino is built here in the city of South, here on Native American land, within our county, that they be smoke-free as well. There's a question regarding the bars that I have personally visited, the bars that I have, what's that? Little louder, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Regarding the bars that I have personally visited, the bars that I have personally talked to, I will say that throughout this process, we've introduced this bill now for the third time, throughout this process, I know that, I can't say that absolutely happened, but I received a checklist from folks from Smoke Free St. Joe that had reached out to every bar and affected establishment, and I can personally say that I reached out at that same time period to every single bar, every single retail establishment. I can't say that I talked to everyone with every phone conversation. Some do not have answering machines, some I didn't even leave a message, but called every single one at the number they were listed. I remember specifically I did it one, it was Saturday, I believe, from noon on, hopefully, again, bars are typically open on a Saturday, and called every establishment. I also, I met with, last time, had several private meetings, not private, they were still open to the public, but small group meetings with bar owners to hear their concerns, and just this last time around, everybody received an email as an invitation to talk with these, you know, talk with a small group of bar owners, responded to Mitch twice, let him know my position, but also let him know that I'd be available to meet regarding this ordinance. Some people have asked about exemptions regarding retail tobacco and regarding vaping. Again, this ordinance is to promote public health by providing clean air for public areas and for employees. We do not see exemptions for certain businesses as a way to advance public health. We see providing clean air for all businesses as the best way to encourage public health. And I do realize that some cities, like Indianapolis, provide an exemption for tobacco retail stores, but some cities, like San Francisco, California, do not. Same with vaping. I'll address vaping a little bit more in the future. But again, we have realized that some communities do, but in the interest of public health, if we're looking for this ordinance to reduce as many cancers as we can, eliminate as many cancers as we can, eliminate heart disease, eliminate lung disease, I think providing exemptions runs counter to our goal. Oh, regarding vaping and health, I talked to a number of vape shop owners over the past couple of weeks, as well as members from their state lobby group, and they presented a number of different studies. But again, those studies seem to be one-off, and they seem to be industry-funded, whereas the World Health Organization, the Food and Drug Administration, the National Institutes for Occupational Safety and Health have all provided recommendations on vaping and do not recommend it indoors or in the workplaces. Kathy, I will turn it over to you briefly. We had a question regarding the substitute bill and whether or not proper procedure was followed.
There's second substitute to be specific. There were two procedural questions that were raised during the Health and Public Safety meeting.
Is it possible to use the mic, or have screens mic?
There were two procedural questions that were raised during the Health and Public Safety meeting that was held earlier this afternoon. They both involve provisions of Section 2-9, which is the parliamentary procedure for the common council. The first one involves Section 2-9 (X). This sets forth the procedure that the city council has to file when an original document is filed with the office of the city clerk. The documents were filed, and this was confirmed during the informal meeting with the staff of the city clerk's office, were filed on Wednesday, March 9th, prior to the noon deadline on that date. They satisfied, that filing satisfied the standards set forth by that particular section, which sets forth also the size of the paper that is required for such a filing, and it was properly accepted by the office of the city clerk. Sometime thereafter, the city clerk's office then is required to give it a bill number. It does not become, a document does not become a bill until formally accepted by this office, and then assigned a bill number, which it was assigned Bill 11-16. It was then placed on the agenda for the next regularly scheduled common council meeting for a first reading, and it was then set for public hearing for this evening, and referred to the Health and Public Safety Committee. The second section that was brought into question was Section 2-9W. This is the section that requires Kareemah Fowler, as our city clerk, to give a reading of the title only of any formal bill that has a bill number to the public at a public meeting. If the title of the bill would have been amended, the bill could not go forward this evening at all, because that has to be republished by the city clerk's staff. Again, the procedures of both sections were properly filed. The council then has the obligation to do their due diligence, to see if reasonable steps were taken with regard to their analysis.
Thank you so much, Kathy. And I should say thank you and Adriana for your work throughout this process. Certainly appreciate it. We had a question regarding flavoring. I guess I'll start with retail establishment, tobacco retail and vape shops. Nothing in this ordinance prohibits these folks from selling their products on a retail basis. They are plenty welcome to sell tobacco products, that's fine. What we're protecting from is smoking indoors. And in particular regarding flavoring, I actually received a study, and some folks from, some experts on this topic will speak a little bit more about during the public, but during the break, I actually received a study from somebody who's just here, but it's a Harvard study showing that the flavoring within vaping solutions is crushing the job. It's a Harvard study from, I believe, 2015. But again, there are experts more qualified than I am that will speak on the health risks of vaping, of flavoring, of everything involved. I guess I will ask the city clerk, were there any other questions that you had of record that I did not address? And also, city council members, any questions that you heard at committee that I did not address? And I'm still going to address all questions that are brought up after public hearing.
Just had a clarification for attorney. Did you, you said that then the council would have to do their due diligence for a second substitute?
On all, on all bills that are filed before the city council, due diligence.
Could you share a little bit more light on that, please? What does that clearly mean to the audience?
Due diligence basically means that reasonable steps are taken by each of the council members and collectively as a whole before they move forward, to see if it's appropriate reasonable legislation which is in the best interest of the city of South Bend.
I appreciate that.
And we'd like to add that the substitute and the second substitute involve two very minor, very easy to understand changes. One in particular being a longer implementation window, which it seems that opposition was requesting. With that, just kind of finalize my presentation. You know, I realize that there's fear that comes with any sort of change, and I can certainly appreciate that. I remember standing up here four years ago with the GLVT quality ordinance, and we had some folks who were afraid, who had some concerns, who thought it was going to negatively impact business. But similar to that, we relied on research, we relied on data, we relied on experiences from other communities, and we did what was right in terms of, you know, the public. I'll say it again, we want businesses to succeed here in the city of South Bend, and we want people to be healthy. We want to reduce cancer, we want to reduce heart disease, we want to reduce lung disease, and I think this ordinance can help us achieve both. Finally, I'd say to you and anyone in the audience, everyone's been impacted in some way by heart disease, by lung disease, by cancer. These are brutal, brutal diseases. Sometimes they happen without exposure to secondhand smoke. However, we know that secondhand smoke increases the likelihood of these diseases. You've all been impacted by those. Think about the lives that were affected, the unique. We can take major steps here tonight to reduce those incidences, to save people's lives. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to start on my right, and start with our second district councilwoman, and work this way, and ask, do you have any questions that you would like to ask councilman Thorpe? Regarding his presentation?
No, thank you.
Okay. No? Okay, councilwoman.
I have no questions based on months and months of research on this issue, and going back to when it was before the state legislature, so I have no questions at this time.
Well, Dr. Ryan.
No, I have a question. This is, I think, the third time we've discussed this. Oh, I'm sorry. Now, this is the third time we've discussed this, and I really don't know that much of anything has changed with regards to the proposal, so I imagine in many ways it will be viewed in light of the previous examination of it, so there aren't any questions that I have at this point in time. Thank you.
All right.
No surveys, please.
All right. I'm good. Okay, if you all, I just have a couple of questions. Regarding the city of Indianapolis and Fort Wayne, aren't they unigov kind of a setup?
City of Indianapolis is, but it actually has distinct municipal entities within it, such as Speedway and Cedar Grove, that did not fall under the ordinance. And Fort Wayne, Allen County is not unigov, and it has New Haven right next to it.
But very similar in terms of, does the, let me put it this way, does the Indianapolis ordinance cover all of Marion County? Or just the unigov, what part of it does it cover?
Again, I think a state expert can speak on this better, but I do not believe it covers cities of Beech Grove, Speedway, and I think there's a few others. So, there's areas within Marion County that are not covered.
Okay. And do you know what percentage of those areas?
They don't.
Do you consider, is that a small percentage of when it comes, we talked about 90% of the counties covered, Marion County, 80, 50, do you know?
I do not. I would, no, I do not.
Is there anybody tonight in your presentation that can clarify how much of Marion County is covered?
Somebody from the public again, if there's any experts that can touch base on Marion County. What I would like to say is, we're not just looking Indianapolis, we're not just looking at Fort Wayne.
I understand that.
We're looking at the CDC study, like 803 cities.
There's a reason, I'm just looking at Indiana right now.
Sure.
I'm not looking, okay? So, I just need to know, because since that is the county unigov, I would like to know how much of Marion County, the county, is covered under this plan?
Sure.
Okay? Is it just, because it's hard to distinguish Indianapolis because of the way they're set up. And the same thing with Fort Wayne, my understanding is that the reason that they are larger is because they went to basically more of an Allen County kind of, that almost everybody in Allen County except for this Latin little piece is covered in Allen County? Are you aware of that?
I know Fort Wayne's had success relative to South Bend in terms of annexing.
That's correct.
A lot of property, but, no, there's, I don't know if the city of New Haven, which is right next door, is covered, and I don't think the county of Allen County, which is actually a pretty good, includes Hunter Town, and it's a pretty big county surrounding it. I don't believe that's.
Again, do we know how much of Allen County?
Sure.
Is covered, because the reason why Fort Wayne is large, it's almost like they just took over the whole county. It's almost like South Bend becoming one, Mission Walker becoming everything else, because of the way state legislation was passed. So, therefore, when you look at county, how much of Allen County was, I mean, are we looking at 70% of Allen County, 80%? Because to just have something passed in South Bend leaves St. Joe County, which has 70,000 people out there, Mission Walker is 60,000, 130,000, we have about 100,000, so that leaves more than 50% of the county over us, at least, we're about 40, and they're about 50. Okay, somewhere in that number, 40, 60, or everything else. So, for me to make those numbers in the state of Indiana, I'm not looking at all across the whole country. I just want to see, if this was to pass, 40% of our county would be covered under this, and 60% probably wouldn't, and the part that we would not call county or city because it would be considered a different country, would be for the Pocagans would be. So, the Pocagans section would be, we have the county section would be, we have Mission Walker, and all those other things. So, that would take us to about 40, 60. So, I want to know, when you look at these numbers, does Indianapolis, are we looking at 40, 60, that leaves Marion out there? Are we looking at the same thing when it comes down to Fort Wayne? Okay, so somehow in your presentation, I would say to you all over here in green shirts, if somebody could help me out in that understanding, that'd be great. And then my final question is, on this part of the day, you mentioned that Elkhart County had a recession, that we all know that was one of the, I think, was that third worst in the country?
Yes.
And that was Elkhart County, is that correct? Was that the city of Elkhart, or was that Elkhart County?
I believe the data was from counties, but I couldn't.
Pardon me?
I believe the data was from county.
Could you double check on that, please, for me?
That jobs rate was county, yeah, counted as a metro, a metro crime, it was counted.
So, that would include Goshen, Elkhart, and all the whole area of Elkhart County, correct?
At least.
Okay. Is there any reason why you think, you know, you showed the numbers that, we heard the testimony this afternoon regarding the businesses in the city of Elkhart, when they passed this bill, you heard the testimony that they went down, okay? But there's also been shared that those who were not affected in the same county where those numbers are, in the county area, did not go down. In fact, not one of them lost. There was not an economic issue at all in the county, because the county is not restricted at all.
I don't, I mean, I don't have any confirmation that that anecdotal.
Well, that's what I was sharing today in the testimony, I'm just showing what was there today. They say that in the county, I heard today that in the county, around Elkhart, that would be, I used to go over there a lot, but that's where the mall is, over there, Dunlap, Goshen, all that whole area over there, okay? All of that was not covered under that ban, okay? And I heard testimony today, and I've been emailed testimony, I'm sure you all have too around here, that in the county area, where there was no ban passed, I mean, they have to deal with the state ban, all of us have to deal with the state ban, okay? And that's kind of like that. But in terms of this particular ban that we were talking about, in this recession, the same recession, the same time when they were losing all the same jobs, in the same area, same state, same place, same house, and same everything, okay? In that, is there a reason why the Elkhart County area did not lose anything, but when this ban happened in the city? Okay, so I'm going county to city here, in the city, we lost all this. And you used the reason why it was economic issues. Why didn't those same economic issues in the same area affect those other bars?
Okay, so again, anecdotal evidence, I don't know if it's verified, I can't, I can't speak for why something happened or why something didn't. What I can say is, there's a wealth of peer-reviewed scientific data that indicates, 803 cities, or 216 cities study.
No, 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 no.
That indicate in a scientific manner that it does not have a negative economic impact.
I understand those studies, but the reason why I focused on my questions today on Indiana cities, okay? For me to do my due diligence, okay, I have to do due diligence, I'm allowed to do due diligence, you are, okay? So, for me to go to bed tonight knowing that I did my due diligence, I need to know, in the state of Indiana, in the county of Elkhart, not in any other place, because that's the closest thing to me right now, we haven't done any studies to my knowledge since the state ban went in and was set, okay? We haven't done any scientific on the city of South Bend. So, the closest one to me is Indiana, is Elkhart. So, is there any kind of thing that, and the question is not just to Gavin, the question again, I'm throwing it out to the present, the presentists, that they can share that, because those who smoke free, if they can share that lightness, it can really be helpful for me tonight. And my question of, why then in Elkhart, it didn't reflect all those national studies that you talked about? I mean, all these national studies said that it didn't have any economic impact, and everything else happened, and it was great, but closer to my home, people I know, friends, church members and everything else, it affected them, okay? And so, I need to figure out, people who I talk to watch the same news, read the same papers, go to school and church, but I talk to these, so I got to figure out, why did it affect them, but didn't affect anybody else? I just need to know that, because I may have to explain that to the same people here in South Bend.
Again, I, we can present anecdotal evidence on the city of Plainfield that shows that it had a positive economic impact, but these are not peer-reviewed scientific research studies that can isolate certain factors and really take a look at a comprehensive clean air policy's impact on a community. So, again, there's no way to take a look at anecdotal evidence and say, well, this happened, so it must be, and this happened, so it must be. So, we need to look at validated research in terms of making our decisions, and that's what I've stated over and over again.
In some form or fashion, this is my last point, before I go to the front. Didn't you just take a look at anecdotal evidence to use the same information to justify your point?
No, I used it as a point to not follow anecdotal evidence, and to please follow peer-reviewed scientific research. I said, don't follow. I said, don't follow the Plainfield study, please. I don't want you to use that as good research.
That's not. So, what we just, do you want us to study then? And you don't want us to study what you said and want to study what you wanted to study?
Sure. For example, the CDC study, the largest study to date, peer-reviewed academic, scientific, cited over twenty-two articles, studied two hundred and sixteen cities in eight states that did not have a statewide ban, and again, conclusively determined that there was no negative economic impact. If you're looking for good data, that's really good data.
Okay. Again, I would say that in the presentation, and that I hope that somebody could focus on just the data that's close to the people I have to live with here in the area. I'm done with my questions. Now, Doc, in terms of, we now need to go to the public, and are you ready to sign?
Yes.
Okay. I do need some. Well, just some logistics issues here real quick. We have people, there's a signing sheet, Gavin, if you can, we can sit around somewhere. We're going, for those of you who are standing right in that area, how are the other people going to get over there? They got no room. So, just walk, maybe just line up this way, line up front. Yes, hold a second, hold a second. We're going to go with those who are speaking in favor first, and if you could just line up right here, Mr. Boles, would you like to speak in favor?
And Oliver?
Yes.
I can make just one request. We may have some folks, maybe Dr. Sam McGrath, who might be out in the hallway, we might have some folks in the hallway.
That's cool.
That are scheduled to speak. If there's anyone in the hallway that is scheduled to speak, or would like to speak right now in favor, and then we'll make the same announcement for those.
For, for.
Yeah, in favor, we'll make the same announcement for those in opposition, but if there's anybody, again, we're looking for specifically Dr. Sam McGrath, but anyone else that's speaking in favor out in the hallway, please come into the room or near the podium if you are able. Thank you.
Okay. Can you, is there any way you can go out there and make the same announcement so they make sure they hear it?
Sure.
Okay. So, again, we would like to make sure that everybody, we are now speaking in favor. Please state your name after you've signed, state your name, your address, and then you have five minutes, you will be timed by Dr. Vardner. Hold on, let me make the announcement first, and then. Councilman McFurlough, are they ready? Okay, we'll wait for you to get back over. Mr. Mayor, you are.
Thank you. And I should begin just by noting, I had another commitment before this was scheduled, so I'm going to have to excuse myself shortly, but I plan to return to the building after I've taken care of that commitment. I am Mayor Pete Buttigieg with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. As mayor, I'm responsible for the public safety as well as the economic direction of this community. We've been following this debate closely in my office, we've been hearing from constituents on both sides, and we see the council hard at work designing a policy that is right for South Bend. In reviewing the details of the bill, there are things I like about it, some things I don't, but this is clearly, overall, a move in the right direction. If it passes, I will sign it, and we will enforce it effectively. When it comes to enforcement, the lead departments have explained their readiness in a letter to council members from our directors of code enforcement and police chief. While the enforcement side is a matter of record already, I wanted to speak on the policy side to explain three reasons why I plan to sign the legislation. The first is public safety. Any trade-off between safety and liberty deserves to be taken seriously. But here, the case for safety is very clear. Research and statistics authoritatively tell us, secondhand smoke will kill an average of fourteen people in South Bend this year alone, and that's just the non-smokers. Now, if we became aware of a natural disaster, a terrorist threat, a virus, or a crime wave that was going to kill more than a dozen of our residents and injure many more in a single year, we would, of course, act to stop it. Just like seat belts, restaurant inspections, or building standards, it is a trade-off in personal liberty that we accept in order to save lives. The second reason has to do with reinforcing South Bend's standing as a leading community. We have been working hard together to place South Bend ahead of our peers, but in this respect, we are behind. Our city is the last, the last, of the five major Indiana communities to enact such protections. Eighty percent of Americans already live under some kind of smoking ban, and half of Americans live under one that bans smoking in all restaurants and all bars. We are, uncharacteristically, behind the times on this one. This is not an experimental policy. We don't have to speculate on the effects because such policies are already the law of the land for most Americans. And in my research, we were not able to find a single case of an American city that moved in the opposite direction. If this were a bad idea, if communities made this kind of move and then regretted it, you would expect that at least some of them would have come to their council and decided to repeal their smoking ban. But we found no evidence of any community that chose to go from smoke-free back to the old way. Third, most importantly, I want to talk about our confidence in the restaurants, bars, and fraternal organizations and other small businesses here. Because if it weren't for that confidence, I would not be prepared to sign this legislation. Both as a mayor and as a resident, I have enormous appreciation for what these businesses, some of them represented here tonight, mean to our community. Hospitality and retail have never been an easy line of business to be in. They demand hard work, hours are long, margins are slim, and any disruptive change can be a threat. But I have enormous confidence in these businesses. They are some of the best in the state, and I do not expect them to fail where others succeed. If a law like this did not ruin the industry in Indianapolis, did not ruin the industry in Fort Wayne, did not ruin the industry in Evansville, has not ruined the industry in Hamilton County, or any of the other places around the state or country that are ahead of us on this, our small businesses should do even better because our small businesses are the best in the business. Research across America shows that business for the restaurant and bar industries either stays the same or gets better compared to places that don't act. If others can make that transition, so can we. But I know it is a challenge for business, and so I thank the council for moderating the bill, creating a longer runway for compliance. And I want to add that our administration will seek out ways to support affected businesses throughout the transition. Nobody likes being told what to do. I know I don't. But that's how laws work, passed by elected officials in American democratic processes. It is time for South Bend to join the rest of the country and recognize that a choice between public health and small business is a false choice. I know this is an emotional issue, but we make decisions based on evidence, especially life and death decisions. So, I want to thank the council for your work, diligence, and leadership on this important issue.
All right. All right, thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Tony Farr, reside at 202 East Angela here in South Bend, but I'm not here simply as a resident, I'm here in my capacity as president of the AFL-CIO Council for our area. In about a month, we'll be having an event in Howard Park at the Workers Memorial Site, and that event is to ask, to recognize the passage of the Occupational Safety and Health Act in nineteen seventy, when for the first time in our country, we said it was a basic right of all workers to have safe and healthy workplaces. And we also began at that time to establish fair and scientific standards as to what constitutes a safe workplace and what did not. And we continue to expand those rights and that understanding. There is no argument today that secondhand smoke is detrimental to people's health. But here tonight, there's going to be a lot of discussion, I'm going to keep my remarks very short. You're going to hear from business owners, you're going to hear from customers of those businesses, but I'm here to speak for employees and for people who would want to be an employee at some place. And never should a worker have to choose between making a living and giving up some of their health, because that's essentially what we're discussing. Our state finally passed legislation that said workplaces should be smoke-free because that's a right of workers. We carved out a little exception, and now, community by community, we have to address it. I feel it's time for South Bend to say, all workplaces should be healthy workplaces. Secondhand smoke is an impediment to employment, and it's a problem for those people who want to be employees. We do not argue today that an employee can make it a choice and work in a less healthy work environment. We don't say, well, we'll allow some businesses to have free floating asbestos, or some places to have high amounts of silica dust, and you made that choice to work there. I know Councilman McFurlough touched on that point. The time is now to address this one last area of where people work, so I urge you to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you. I'm Blake Savitt, five-six-two-nine Sterling Drive, Granger. I'm new to this community, I've been here for four years. I'm a cardiothoracic surgeon, was here to talk about the public health risks, not only of this ban, but smoking in general. I think this is very important to understand as public health risk to explore the history of tobacco abuse in this country and why we have an epidemic now. To talk about is back in nineteen nineteen, a famous medical person in this community, Paul DeNashner, was a medical student, he saw the five colleagues of his, the first case of lung cancer that he thought he would ever see in his career. At that time, that disease was unheard of. Nobody had lung cancer. He was told he will never see this again in his career. Sixteen years later, nineteen thirty-six, he reported on nine cases of lung cancer. He, at that time, made the association with smoking. He was, all medical communities, all industries castigated him at that time. It took thirty years till the Surgeon General actually made the association with smoking and lung cancer. At that time, many communities, like we here with secondhand smoke, even healthcare industries debated the economics of that. This year, we have the fifty-year anniversary of that, thirty-second anniversary of the Surgeon General report. We have now had twenty million Americans in fifty years die from lung cancer. Two-point-five million have died from secondhand smoke. My practice, ninety percent of heart and lung disease is related to smoking-related diseases. The only economic impact you will see from this will put me out of business, and that's a good thing to do. The only people that don't believe in this state of health risk are those that are in the tobacco industry, are those that actively smoke. I encourage you to pass this ban. Thank you very much.
Next. Good evening. My name is Sam McGrath, and I'm a radiologist oncologist at the Memorial Regional Cancer Center. I also chair the Thoracic Oncology Conference at Memorial Hospital. First of all, I'd like to thank the South Bend City Council for asking me to speak briefly and objectively this evening on the dangers of secondhand smoke. Please know that my position on this issue is shared by all five of the oncologists within the Beacon Medical Group. As physicians, we choose to practice in a preventative manner. It is one of our chief responsibilities to alert our patients to dangers within our environment and the negative consequences of unhealthy exposures. I view secondhand smoke as one such exposure, and really one of the silent public health crises of our era. Since nineteen sixty-four, as Dr. Savitt has just mentioned, two and a half million non-smokers have died from health problems caused by secondhand smoke exposure. This year alone, forty-two thousand people will die from the disease caused by secondhand smoke. The problem extends beyond lung cancer. Secondhand smoke exposure exacerbates COPD and asthma, contributes to heart disease and stroke, can increase one's susceptibility to contracting tuberculosis, and can accelerate autoimmune disease processes such as rheumatoid arthritis. I've treated a bartender in a non-smoke-free establishment whose biggest concern wasn't the cancer that that patient was dealing with, but repeated mucus plugs within her lungs that required removal via bronchoscopy. I've treated a saxophone-playing musician who developed cancer of the larynx and felt it was due to years of secondhand smoke exposure at venues hosting his performances. The majority of physicians in the field of oncology can tell you story after story of similar instances, and I can assure you that they are all absolutely heartbreaking. We also need to examine the financial impact of secondhand smoke exposure. Smoking-related illness in the United States costs us more than three hundred billion each year, one hundred and seventy billion for direct medical care and one hundred and fifty-six billion in lost productivity, including five-point-six billion in lost productivity due to secondhand smoke exposure. It is incumbent upon all of us to protect the health of the general public and individuals working in establishments where smoking is allowed, many of whom absolutely need the employment and some of whom have few other job alternatives. I am not suggesting that we strip an individual of their right to smoke or any other personal liberties, not at all. I'm suggesting that we act to protect those who choose not to smoke. If we can acknowledge one's right to smoke, we must similarly support one's right to breathe clean air. All of the aforementioned health consequences can drastically be reduced by implementing clean air measures. So, in closing, I'd like to thank you for your time and attention this evening, and I ask that you carefully consider this very important matter for the sake of all of us. Thank you.
Next.
Steve Tep, five-two-seven-six-two, with the old drive South Bend.
Can you speak a little louder, sir?
I'm Steve. Thanks, Steve, yeah, okay. I'm a musician, I'm in three bands, everybody, all twenty musicians in our three bands and hundreds of other musicians, about a hundred of musicians that I'm friends with are all really hoping that you folks will, will make this a uniform code so we don't have to go in these places and breathe the smoke. It's really, really bad, and we're not rich, we can't afford to, like, play some places and then turn down work, you know, we really have to take everything we can get. And I, I'm not really into big government, but I, I was really thinking that it was the role of government to protect people, you know, from the interests of, of the bar owners or, you know, the businesses. I thought it was, I thought you guys would be protecting us. And it's getting so bad that we can hardly even get through a second set. You know, it's, we're up on these stages, it's high, it's just unbelievable, and so, we're really hoping for that. And the other thing I was going to say was that, believe me, we post these things on Facebook, and it's almost across the board, the bars will get more people for non-smoking venues about, with our own.
Thank you, I'm Steve.
Okay. Is that it?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. The very first question that people on Facebook ask is, is it smoking or non-smoking? And if, and we don't really like to say if it's smoking because we know it hurts our audience so much, about, we probably get forty percent of, less of our, of our, our crowd coming to our gigs. And I play with three different bands, a Motown band, a rock band, and another band, so there's kind of a cross-section there. I think that the bar owners would be pleasantly surprised by how many more people come out.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Breen. I live at one-one-five East Woodside Street in South Bend, and I'm here as a business owner. I've been working in healthcare, public health, for almost nine years now, as a doula, and the clients that I see come in with questions every day, call me with questions every day about their pregnancies and about their children, about their newborns. Issues about health disparities have run rampant. We know that St. Joe County has one of the very highest infant mortality rates in our country. This issue is not something that needs to be ignored, and this ordinance can help. We know that second and third-hand smoke affects children, it affects babies, it affects pets. This is a very high indicator in SIDS. This is not just about a bottom line and a dollar sign, this is about the health of generations to come behind us. This is historic and it's important, and I'm asking that we support the parents who don't want to smoke and their children that deserve a chance at clean air. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Amy Cruz Noonar, and I live at six-one-one-five Miami Road. I would like to say that in two thousand and three, I think it was, when New York City passed their no-smoking bill, the ordinance, I was living there, and I was in the hospitality retail industry, and it did not affect my income in any way. Also, I was lucky enough to live in Chicago when they passed their no-smoking ordinance, and it did not stop me from going out to any bars or restaurants. I would just simply walk outside, and that was it. And then, now having three small kids, I would like to know that they don't have to go through this process that we're going through right now, and they won't have to deal with this again. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Hello. My name is Victoria Zalmer, and I live at 1233 North Eddie Street. I'm twenty-five years old, and I have lived in South Bend for the last eight years. I love South Bend. This city has become my community. I'm currently a PhD candidate at the University of Notre Dame studying cancer, but I'm not here tonight to hit you with science. I'm here actually to talk to you about what it's like to go out in a nonsmoke-free city as a young twenty-something. So, first off, my support for this ordinance comes first and foremost out of my concerns for the community. This ordinance will protect all the workers and patrons' right to clean air. However, there are two other major ways this ordinance could positively impact our city. First, to promote growth of the city of South Bend and its community, we need to provide and support a healthy image for our city. Smoke-free air is the perfect way to do this, as it shows that South Bend protects its employees and patrons alike. Second, this ordinance could bring the young professional crowd out to new and different establishments. Young professionals like me are less likely to frequent a business. If I know they're smoking in a bar, I'm not going to go there. I don't want to, after a long day in the lab with my lab mates, go out to a bar for a beer and then come in the next day and have my jacket still smell like smoke. So people my age are more likely to try a new place if we know that it's smoke-free. In short, I believe this ordinance, the smoke-free ordinance, could be a positive way to connect the young professional community with this amazing city that has become my home. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Craig Clark, and I reside at 3267 Chalk Maple Court. Dear council members, on behalf of the Indiana Black Expo Incorporated, I am expressing our organization's steadfast support of a strong smoke-air law in the city of South Bend. Since 1970, Indiana Black Expo has worked to be an effective voice and vehicle for the social and economical advancement of African-Americans. We are conveners and facilitators, addressing problems that are prevalent in our African-American community by advocating and identifying good health. As a result, one of the focus areas in health and wellness of black people living without, throughout Indiana, we advocate for smoke-free air laws and policies because of the disproportionate impact that it has on African-Americans. Okay. Last year, twelve hundred people in Indiana were killed by secondhand smoke. Over half the United States population has a law that requires workplaces, including bars, to be smoke-free. Also, it helps ensure that the greater number of working Hoosiers will help less exposure, have less exposure to the dire effects of secondhand smoke, especially those who are the most vulnerable. Here at Indiana Black Expo, we have a slogan whereas "Secondhand smoke kills; however, love changes," and that's for the mothers finest, which are everyone in this room, your mothers finest. So therefore, you need to try 1-800-QUIT-NOW. Unfortunately, many African-American Hoosiers work in low-paying jobs and with smoking is the norm. Low-paid or not, low-paid or not walking away from a job that allows you the survival, to be self-sufficient and... Okay. For you to be self-sufficient in a particular job. So we need these jobs, and we don't want to be, have to go into an environment that where it's unhealthy and can cause more diseases and health problems. Once again, we want to add our voice to the voices of our partners who are in support of smoke-free air. The recent passed Indiana State law did not go far enough for the city of South Bend. So the city of South Bend lawmakers now have an opportunity to move a step closer towards a comprehensive smoke-free air law. We hope that you will choose the health and wellness of our shared contingencies and vote for this proposal to for a smoke-free environment. Thank you. Respectfully submitted by Craig Clark, President of Indiana Black Expo. Thank you.
Next. You might want to tell them a square thing.
Hi. My name is Isis Dixon. I live at 1021.
The minute is the microphone.
Thank you. 1021 East Irvington. This has touched me personally. I had a grandmother that smoked for many years, and she ended up stopping smoking because she wanted to benefit her family, but she was a little too late, and she ended up suffering from that. She had a choice to smoke, but I didn't have a choice when it came down to me going to visit her, and she was struggling breathing and trying to struggle through her lung cancer. I didn't have a choice when I looked at her, and she couldn't enjoy the things that she did. Yes, she had a choice, but where was my choice to be able to enjoy extra time with her? And when she was on her deathbed, the only thing I could remember her telling me was to make sure you don't smoke, and all the family members in our house, "Don't smoke because this is what's happening." And I watched her take her last breath, and I didn't have a choice in that matter. So even if this ordinance saves one person, then it's a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Kevin O'Farrell. I live at 178 Houston Sonic Drive in Milford, Connecticut. I work for the Campaign for Tobacco Free Kids. We are a national organization, and Illinois is one of, I'm sorry, Indiana is one of eleven states that I cover for the campaign. And in all of those states, I've worked to see many local and state policies become law in my over ten years with the organization. And I'm here today to do a couple of things. First off, to give you my perspective on the legality of this measure. Because you've done the right thing here, and I think Councilman Furlig referred to this, because you haven't made any arbitrary decisions about one worker being more valuable than another worker, and you've decided to treat all workers the same and cover them equally, and treat all businesses the same and cover them equally, you've really eliminated your risk to having a law here that would pass tonight that could possibly be overturned as a result of a lawsuit. That is just really clear in all my experience in the states that I've worked. We've had this law reviewed by several attorneys, both inside the public health and outside public health, who all come to the same conclusion. Also, one of the things that has been mentioned here is e-cigarettes tonight. While these are a relatively new product, the dozens of cities and states across the country, actually way more than that, but a third of the states that have comprehensive smoke-free laws have also already included e-cigarettes in their smoke-free laws to make sure that if there's a place you can't smoke, you can't vape. They've done this because the evidence is clear. There's no question, based on the evidence today, that e-cigarettes are probably safer than combustible cigarettes. But that doesn't mean that they're safe. And, and what you're doing today is a step to try to rid workplaces and public places of a pollutant, of a contaminant, of carcinogens. Why in the world would you want to open the door and let another one in there, especially when it is equally addictive? So you're doing this for workers, you're doing this for customers, that is really what is most important here, too. Based on the current science, the CDC, the World Health Organization, all the major health organizations, including the Campaign, the American Cancer Society, the American Heart Association, the American Lung Association, all of them, without exception, recommend that e-cigarettes be included in, in smoke-free laws. Also, economics, you know, just to be clear, and, and the council member earlier referred to this, what the data shows and the CDC study conclusively proves is what usually happens when a smoke-free law goes into effect is for a month or so, there's a little bit of a blip. People are getting used to the new law, smokers aren't sure whether they want to keep going out, the new folks aren't sure whether the laws really, the nonsmokers aren't sure the law's going to stick. But then that city goes back on whatever trend it was on before. So if business was going up, it continues to go up. If business was going down, it continues to go down. Unfortunately for Elkhart, that was the situation they were in when they passed that law, and I think we're going to have some, some information specifically to that, that data, if you want to call it that, coming up shortly. You should look at the empirical data. Look, I want to be really clear, this feels like a hard vote to you tonight. And despite the idea about personal rights versus nanny-state and liberal versus conservative, it doesn't matter where the city council is that takes this vote, whether it's in Berkeley, or whether it's in Austin, or whether it's in Indy, or New York, or New Orleans. The pro side comes out and really talks about public health, the business community comes out and talks about the fears of losing their business. But the reality is that five years from now, ten years from now, all of you who vote for this ordinance tonight will look back and say it's one of the greatest things you did as council members. And I'll tell you the truth, if past experiences any indication, a good chunk of the people wearing the red shirts tonight will do the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tracy Kennedy. I live in Columbia, Missouri, and I'm here on behalf of the Americans for Nonsmokers' Rights. We have been involved in the fight for smoke-free air for forty years now. I work in thirteen Midwest states and here in Indiana to make sure that all workers have the right to breathe smoke-free air at work. If we're going to consider economic impact, I think we do need to look at the broader issue that our, the economy of South Bend is impacted by smoke and secondhand smoke. There were some statistics cited earlier about loss of productivity, but the reality is the tobacco industry is spending two-hundred-and-eighty-eight million dollars to recruit Indiana youths to become addicted to their products. And they are not offering to recoup the cost for building fires, for maintenance and cleaning, for workers' sick leave. So we're, our youth are becoming addicted to these products, people are continuing to use these products, and the industry is not offering any kind of recoup to the businesses that then have to foot the bill for exposure to smoke and secondhand smoke. So I want us to keep that in mind. My colleagues have shared the empirical data on economic impact, and I would stand by that as well. In addition to including e-cigarettes in this proposal, I think it's really essential to ensure successful implementation and enforcement. It can be difficult for a patron to determine the difference between an electronic cigarette or a traditional cigarette and what's being used in the place of business. So to avoid any enforcement, implementation pitfalls, we recommend strong smoke-free ordinances that apply to all workplaces equally, so all workers are protected, and there's no confusion about where you can smoke and where you can't smoke, or what you can smoke and what you can't smoke. In addition to our organization, the Americans for Nonsmokers' Rights, we're joined by leading worker groups, like previous colleagues shared, including the American Society for Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineering, ASHRAE. So these are the leading experts responsible for developing engineering standards for building ventilation systems. And to qualify for a basis of good air quality according to ASHRAE, the expectation is that the workplace be smoke-free and e-cigarette-free. Including, in addition to ASHRAE, NIOH has also stated that e-cigarettes should be, not be used in the workplace. So we know that smoke-free lives save, save money. Smoke-free laws save lives and they save money, and they are not only popular in the beginning, but they grow in popularity over time. We have the public opinion polling to show that. So I welcome any questions from the council and urge you to support this ordinance tonight.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Nick Torres. I work for the American Lung Association in Indianapolis. I wanted to speak to a couple of the questions we had regarding, regarding Elkhart specifically. So at the, at the request of Councilman Furlig, we reached out to the Alcohol Tobacco Commission for the state of Indiana to request data that would show the alcohol permits for the city of Elkhart. We got that data shortly before the meeting began, and so, over the last, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes, we've been trying to filter through the data, again, that comes from the state, to see how it compares with the list that was provided to the council during the committee process. And I just wanted to point out that there's, we noticed several discrepancies, and, and again, this goes to the question of relying on anecdotal evidence, anecdotal data, to base some of these decisions on. So in particular, we noticed several, several bars listed on the sheet were still listed by the state as having active liquor licenses. Several were still listed as actually having gone out of business before the ordinance was even brought up in Elkhart. So, again, we haven't had a chance to go through all of the data. We got this very shortly before the meeting started. We'd like to continue to go through that, but it just calls into question some of the, some of the anecdotes that we're, we're asked to rely on here. You know, and also, there's some glaring pieces missing from, from this sheet as well. It doesn't show any of the new bars or restaurants that have opened up in Elkhart since the ordinance. I mean, looking at the, at the, at the data, again, from the state, and the chart that Councilman Furlig showed earlier was data from the State Office of Workforce Development, and they're the ones that track the employment figures and things. And to answer one of the questions, I think, was, yes, it was for the metro area for Elkhart Goshen, which was the, the best level of data that the state provides. But we clearly see that manufacturing was a huge loss during the recession. I mean, I would encourage you all to look at Elkhart Truth. They have some actually pretty moving articles that, that detail the experiences of Elkhart residents during the recession. You know, news crews were there just sharing the stories. The president visited Elkhart several times, including right after he was elected, to highlight what was happening. You know, it was the RV capital of the, of the country, and those manufacturing jobs really hit Elkhart hard. And, you know, in one of the articles in the Elkhart Truth, it quoted one of the bar owners, and by then, this was after the smoking ordinance had gone into effect, it quoted one of the bar owners saying, you know, "Business had been, indeed, had been hard." But the reason that he cited was not the smoking ordinance. The reason he cited for lower, lower business levels was that all the shift workers from the manufacturing sector were out of work. No shift workers equal no, no bar customers. So we're seeing lower, lower rates of visitors to some of these bars, but you just have to, have to look at, at the hard data from the state. It's clear that, I don't think anyone here would argue that the smoking ordinance in Elkhart caused the Great Recession of 2008. There's no, there's no way that we can correlate those two. So the businesses come and go for many different reasons, and unfortunately, Elkhart was just hard, hit hard by that, by that recession. Finally, there was also one other question from Councilman Davis in terms of the Indianapolis ordinance. We did some quick calculations. It appears that the Indianapolis ordinance covers ninety-two percent of, of the population in Marion County.
Thank you.
Just to answer your question. Thank you.
I appreciate that answer. Well, you said ninety-two, sir? Ninety-two, right? All right, thank you. Ninety-two. I'll come back to that, ninety-two. Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Green. I reside at 1028 Epping Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46615. It is clear and evident the dangers of secondhand smoke. Fifty-nine people from our community alone die each year due to secondhand smoke. These are our mothers, our fathers, our brothers, our sisters, family, friends. Many may not have had the option to be able to work where, or at least been, have had the option of where they could work. We must honor their memory and protect all workers regardless of where they work. All residents of South Bend deserve to live, work, study, and play in a smoke-free environment. By implementing this ordinance, we can protect all workers and patrons from the dangers of secondhand smoke, reduce disease and death associated with secondhand smoke, motivate smokers to quit, and reduce the number of people who start smoking. The research is clear, and as a lifelong resident of South Bend, the time is now. We must protect all workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Carl Nichols, 1530 College Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46628. I want to thank you guys for hearing us into this late into the evening. I just want to talk about how smoke-free St. Joe pledge pledges their assistance to these affected companies if this ordinance is actually passed, in three main ways: through community education, event promotion, and marketing workshops. So the first two, we're really, really good at, right? We're good at getting into the community, educating people about new things or things that can cause harm. So through the community education piece, we provide every affected business with an implementation kit that has coasters, table tents, signage for indoor and outdoor signage, FAQs on how to work with their customers, and just a how-to guide on how to make this go with their customers as well as their employees. We have the ability to get in contact with the media, to highlight certain businesses. We want to work with the council to, for event promotion, so if you can identify... We want to work with the council to, for event promotion, so if you can identify businesses in, in your district that, that wish to go early, we will work with them to have, to have events in conjunction with them to bring in new blood into their, to their business and to bring additional business to them. And the last part, which we aren't experts at at the business side of things, but we do have partners that we work with, we will bring in experts to do marketing workshops. We pledge to host a minimum of four two-hour workshops, including topics such as marketing via social media, branding and promoting your smoke-free venue, event planning and promotion, as well as expanding your customer base. Again, this is set up to not hurt business. It's set up to promote business and help businesses grow, and we want to be able to help do that. Again, the evidence is clear that businesses are not hurt by smoke-free ordinances, and just thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? Would like for you to line up? Could you also check outside in the hallway? Want to make sure everybody from the outside, want to make sure nobody is left. Can you go make an announcement? Yeah, go check the announcements. Let me go out there. Anybody else is in favor? So you can make sure that all voices were heard here in South Bend tonight. Here you got you, you making one more announcement, and then this is going to be it. I didn't even go myself, but I would thank God. I thought I was talking about this. I was just trying to hold. I'm tearing myself out a little. Are you good? Anybody else coming in from out there?
So what we're going to do is once the line's done, then allow them to come in one by one. That's what the fire marshal wants.
For real?
Yeah. That'll be okay. I don't think there's a whole lot.
In opposition.
No more four, though?
No more four.
Oh, no more four?
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying to you. Is there anybody else four?
No, no more four. No.
I'm trying to say, I'm saying at the end of, end of opposition, then if anybody else wants to speak in opposition.
I got your point. I thought you were saying they're lining up out there.
No, one by one. It's okay. No, we wanted to keep it somewhat short.
Okay, cool. All right. So this is the last person to speak in favor. Okay? All righty. Before you speak, I just want, do we need to take a, one to the after? Speak, and then we do that. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Andersstrom with offices at 526 West Western Avenue. I've come to every council meeting and have listened to many different issues, and this is the first time I'm choosing to speak on an issue. There are parts of this proposed ordinance that I have further questions about, such as the inclusion of volunteers as employees, as well as the enforcement of such an ordinance on nonprofits should a complaint be filed. That being said, I am in favor of this proposed ordinance for three reasons. The first is from a professional grassroots level. As the executive director of the Monroe Circle Community Center in downtown South Bend, which primarily serves neighbors and public housing, I have a daily reminder of the adverse effects of smoking on our neighbors. Many of them have limited options when it comes to employment, and many feel their only choice is to work in any place they can find, even if that means it is a smoking environment. I also see the results of children who experience the adverse effects of secondhand smoking. This ordinance, by my understanding, would prohibit smoking in public housing areas. The second reason I have for being in favor of this proposed ordinance is from a professional strategic perspective. As a member of the Memorial Hospital Community Health Advisory Council, I see the large-scale data of our current health condition as it affects poor health across the scope of our city, including results of the problems that smoking brings to our neighbors. Many of the issues we see at this strategic level are preventative, including the negative effects of smoking. The third and final reason is incredibly personal for me. Yes, we all know people who have suffered the negative effects of smoking. We've heard many stories tonight already. A close relative of mine also suffered a serious heart attack years ago as a direct result. Beyond these personal examples, however, is something greater for me, and I'll just be honest with each of you, and if I can breathe a moment of humanity into this room. I really, I love people. I really do. I spend most of my time each week with people, helping people, listening to people, and the reason for this is that people are God's treasure. Every person in here is, has eternal value and worth. And so for me, the ultimate reason why I'm choosing to support this proposed ordinance is because I want to help extend every person's time on earth as long as possible. I know some may not agree with me, but it's hard for me to keep doing funerals for people who die at a young age from heart failure. It's hard for me to do funerals for children born at six months premature because his mom was a smoker, whose coffin is literally smaller than my tablet. I support this ordinance because although it may cause some people some personal trouble, it has great potential to extend the greatest gift God has given each of us, which is human life. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to, President Davis, make a motion that we take a five-minute recess.
South Bend, that's second? All in favor, say aye. Before I say the other part of it, I want anybody to know, Dr. Vana?
Forty-two.
You have 42 minutes?
Forty.
We have 39 minutes. Uh, you want to combine both of those and just say we got 40 minutes?
Forty.
We got 40 minutes. Let's keep it.
Forty.
Forty minutes is fine. Okay? All opposed? All opposed? So we're all taking a bathroom break? Did you have any opposing that? We're going to take a five-minute bathroom break, and then we're going to be back. Do you hear 40 minutes of opposition? Thank you. So 40? Hello, everybody. Can anybody please take their seats?
All over 40.
Yeah, we're going to do 40 minutes as soon as, once they introduce themselves, we're going to, everybody's lining up. Those who like to speak in opposition, Mr. Furlig, could you also do the same thing for the audience outside?
I did. Yeah, that's what I know.
Okay, you already know that they're, they're here.
After, after the line is finished, if anybody wants to come in from the outside, then they have to come in one by one because of the fire marshal.
Okay, so the fire, where's the fire marshal? Right there?
That's right there.
Okay, you will help, you'll help guide that, you'll help guide the people when they come in together. I appreciate that, sir. Okay? We have order, has been restored, and so those who like to speak in opposition, please come closer to the mic so we can expedite for 40 minutes. That is about to begin as soon as I stop. All righty? We have the attorney right here. Attorney General. Begin, 40 minutes.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank everybody who came tonight. This is a great showing of, of democracy. Madam clerk, members of the council. It is. I, I asked a question earlier when we talked about this.
Name and address, sir.
Oh, sorry. Frank Julian, place of business is 1620 South Bend Avenue in South Bend, Indiana, 46613. Why are we here tonight? Because I will tell you that if you're wearing a green shirt tonight, I will tell you, you've already won this issue. You've won.
Please address us. Sir? Address the council, please.
Okay. I was making a point. I know. Okay. I will tell you, I will tell you that it's not hard in this county, okay, to find a place of business, to find a restaurant that is smoke-free. In fact, when I was first approached about this, I had to sit down and think of whether I could think of any bars or restaurants that still allowed smoking. This is no longer the public health issue these statistics make it, make it out to be. And I will tell you that sometimes when you're doing a trial or you're listening to people, you get little nuggets. And just to show you how bad the statistics we got tonight are, at one point in the afternoon, we heard Councilman Furlig say 29 people in this county will die a year. And then we heard the mayor say 11, and then we heard somebody else say 59. I will tell you that the statistics that Councilman Furlig used have been debunked. British Medical Journal, Journal of the American Medical Association, Cato Institute, all have said that the body count data that you heard, 600,000 people died a year, okay? That has been debunked. I will tell you, because we have a very short period of time, even though Councilman Furlig had 40 minutes to talk, we had five minutes, I will tell you that this is going to drive people who smoke from South Bend businesses to Mishawaka, to the county.
Okay, man. Now just talk to the audience. Continue.
It is going to drive people to the casino. And I find it funny that the mayor was here, and on one hand, he talks about, "I want public safety, and I want to save these people," and on the other hand, he takes $2 million from that casino. That's bond money, okay? He's going to take $2 million from that, from a smoking establishment. Will, will the mayor say, "I won't take that money"? Will the council say, "I won't take that money"? I doubt it, but it's going to be a smoking facility. The studies that were shown, the studies that show there's no economic impact, most of those studies were done in southern states. Most of those studies are done in places where it's easy for a restaurant or a bar to have an outside facility where people who can smoke. South Bend's not like that. And most of the year, it's not possible to go enjoy a drink or go hang out outside on the patio. I will tell you that the economic study looks at tax data, how much money we're taking in. And those studies do show that it all equals out, because TGI Fridays or Applebee's will take in more money when they go smoke-free. What it doesn't tell you, and there are studies that I provided to members of the council, it shows that individual businesses, individual private establishments like the VFW, these veterans here, small businesses, get devastated by these smoking bans. And when we come in a year to the same council meeting, maybe to talk about this or revisit it, these business owners are not going to be here. And it's not anecdotal evidence what happened in Elkhart. It's not. Anecdotal evidence, from what I learned in law school, is not an expert in the field coming in and saying that there were 38 taverns in the city of Elkhart that were in business prior to the smoking ban, and then 14 of those businesses left now. If I had time, I'd read off their names. That's not anecdotal evidence. Those are facts. Facts in testimony, in the record. You are going to see these businesses, the folks that are here, they are going to testify that if they lose 10% of their gross because smokers decide to go to Mishawaka or go to the county, they're going to go out of business. These businesses have a very thin margin, and we're taking it away because we want to enforce, or you want to enforce, your morality on other people. You don't smoke, so you don't want anybody to smoke, and that's all that's happening here. Because there are enough businesses here for this to have a really major public health impact. And I will tell you that the studies, every single study that we saw in Councilman Furlig's thing, has been shown and attacked and shown that it's not necessarily true that the health statistics are as bad as they say. I'm not here to defend smoking or secondhand smoke, but it's not as bad as they say. Thank you. I know I'm short on time.
Thank you. Next. Next. Nick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is James A. Masters with the law firm of Nemeth Feeny Masters in Campiti. We are still proudly located in downtown South Bend at 350 Columbia Street, even after being chased out of the building over here on Washington Street. I'm here to address the council on behalf of Richmond Master Distributors, located in South Bend at 4202 Technology Drive. Richmond Master Distributors is a wholesale distributor of products for grocery and convenience stores, products including beverages, candy, and confections, and merchandise generally, groceries, health and beauty care, snacks, and of course, tobacco products, which is why we are here. Richmond Master Distributors has 320 employees company-wide. Richmond Master Distributors owns and operates 53 low-bop tobacco stores in the South Bend metropolitan area with 240 employees just in those stores. Six of the low-bop stores are located within the South Bend city limits and have 25 employees. The proposed South Bend ordinance would prohibit smoking in tobacco retail stores. That is Section 14124Y. If the proposed South Bend anti-smoking ordinance is adopted in its current form, the South Bend ordinance would impose the strictest smoking ban in the state of Indiana. At present, retail tobacco stores are exempt from the prohibition against smoking in public places under Indiana state law, so long as the stores meet the requirements of state law, most particularly that no young person under the age of 18 may enter the store. Richmond Master Distributors requests the council to amend the proposed smoking ordinance by granting an exemption to tobacco retail stores to allow smoking tobacco, at tobacco retail stores. Other Indiana cities, Indianapolis, Bloomington, Evansville, Elkhart, have adopted local anti-smoking ordinances which have regulations more restrictive than state law. Apparently, you've looked at some of these ordinances as a model for the proposed South Bend ordinance. The ordinance is adopted by these cities, all expressly exempt retail tobacco stores from their smoking bans. Unlike the state of Indiana, unlike these other cities, the South Bend's proposed anti-smoking ordinance would provide no exception for retail tobacco stores. This absolute prohibition under the proposed South Bend ordinance against smoking in retail tobacco stores that have as their only business the sale of tobacco products raises serious legal concerns. There are court decisions from the Indiana Court of Appeals and the United States Federal Appeals Court which hold that exceptions under smoking ordinances for businesses whose very livelihoods dependent upon tobacco sales are constitutional. In these decisions, the courts have ruled that it is reasonable to exempt retail tobacco businesses from the citywide smoking ban. The reason is simple. An exemption from the smoking ban for businesses that sell tobacco is both rational and constitutional because unlike bars and restaurants that sell food and beverages and where smoking is incidental to the business, the business of a retail tobacco store is wholly dependent upon tobacco sales, and the business has no other way to make up for lost profits called by, caused by a citywide smoking ban. In view of these court decisions, it would be reasonable for the city of South Bend to make an exception for retail tobacco stores under its ordinance, as is allowed under state law. In fact, an argument can be made that it's unreasonable for, for the city to not exempt retail tobacco stores from the smoking ban. If the proposed South Bend ordinance does not contain an exemption for retail tobacco stores, it will put retail tobacco stores in the city of South Bend at a competitive disadvantage with tobacco stores located in Mishawaka, in towns in unincorporated areas in St. Joseph County outside the South Bend city limits, and with tobacco stores in fact located in Elkhart, where tobacco stores are exempt from that city's smoking ban. All this talk about scientific, peer-reviewed data, for that to have any relevance to what we're talking about here tonight, it would make, it would have to be a comparison to the economic effect for cities where the city is surrounded by either other areas of the same county or adjacent cities that don't have a smoking ban. Let me just sum up my comments with regard to the ordinance itself. This ordinance regulates the sale of tobacco in retail tobacco stores. It goes beyond the city's powers to adopt regulations on restrictions on smoking in public places. And if this is, if this ordinance is enacted without change, it would be subject to a legal challenge. May I have one second? One, 30 seconds to address this issue concerning the... One, 30 seconds to address this issue concerning the fact-
Just to give steps for the record, I appreciate it. I understand.
Substitute, this substitute bill is out of order. It not only violates your own parliamentary procedure, it violates state law for you to consider this bill.
I got you. We understand you. Thank you, sir. Next? Moving forward? Name and address?
Members of the council, thank you. I am Scott Carrico, Vice President, CEO of Master Distributors and Lobos. Thank you for your time. You've heard a lot of testimony today, a lot of facts being thrown around. But I can tell you from facts from my own company, being here, I'm a second generation, that our place is here in South Bend. I have eight locations within the city limits, with 25 employees. As Jim had mentioned earlier, I employ 325 families. They depend on me to make the right decisions and fight for the rights of the people that we take care of, as well as the, as well as the other people that we have within our organization. Just to kind of give you an idea, I had said this earlier, but I think it bears repeating. I, I collect for the state, local, and federal government $60 million in tax. I also have $2.1 million in payroll tax, I pay. Not to mention the state OTP at 5.7 million, and the state sales taxes collected 2.9 million that I collect for my, my company. Plus property taxes, which benefits South Bend here, because my warehouse is based here. Doesn't mean I have to be here, because I have other warehouses without the state, one of them being in Indianapolis. It doesn't make me better logically located to be here in South Bend, because I cover five states. Indianapolis would be a better suited area for me. And what was brought up prior was the fact that I do have locations down in Indianapolis and tobacco shops, we do have exemptions for this. So I'm asking you to take a common sense approach, and to slow the roll a little bit, and see what it's gonna do and affect us. It's gonna affect the people that put you in office. The people here, that I employ, will be affected by this, because of this smoking ban. I'm not here to argue the secondhand or firsthand smoke. That is not why I'm here. I have jobs. People talk about jobs that they can't get. I can't hire enough people for our warehouse that is smoke-free. That is a fact. So when they talk about the fact they can't get good quality jobs, I'm here in South Bend saying, right now, I'm actively looking for good quality people in a smoke-free area. So, to be blunt, I'm talking to you from a second generation. My father built this business, and I'm here to be a steward and grow the business, and be part of this community that we are involved in. I don't think this is fair. I think that there's a lot of things that are good, bad, or indifferent. But I'm gonna speak to you as a business owner, and this is who we are. And smokers are under attack. It's a dirty product, I'll be first to say. But, it is, and always will be, until they outlaw it, a choice that can be made by an adult. And if we take that away, then what is next? That's what I ask you, right here, right now. It's a choice. Don't take that choice away from people that want to do that. We're 18 and above stores. They make that conscious choice to come into our stores. Thank you.
The next? Name and address?
My name is Andrew Duncan, 439 South Michigan Street, 46613. The opposition has told us about what is God's greatest gift to this earth. But one thing that we need to discuss, which is also a great gift of God, is free choice. And as an adult, I, once I reached the age of 18, I became legal aids to make a free choice. I choose when I want to go into a smoking bar. I choose when I want to work at a, a smoking establishment. And as the gentleman before me has said, there are plenty of establishments out here that are non-smoking. So when our opposition tells us that these people are in desperate need of jobs, and the only ones available are smoking, that simply is untrue. What I'm here to request is that we send this to a working committee, so that we can answer the questions that are still left unanswered. There are stones unturned. We talked and we heard Mr. Ferlich speak with Mr. Davis earlier, when he asked him about the city of Elkhart. There are still questions there that cannot be answered. We need the city of South Bend. Something that makes us great is that we are unique. We are unique in St. Joe County, we are unique in South Bend, and so we need to study what this will do to our businesses. And as far as to address what you said, Mr. Ferlich, about no businesses will be economically affected, I don't think that you encompass vaporizer shops. My shop will have to leave town. I believe that that is the definition of being economically effective. I will be out of work. I'm a working class student, trying to invest in the city of South Bend, invest in my future. And I feel that a vote in favor of this tonight robs me of that, because it takes my job.
Amen.
I speak very passionately, because I come as a first-generation student in my family, and I hope to represent it well. But when things like this haphazardly get passed, or not looked at, in the common day person, you talked about how statistics need to be put to a human face. Well, here, I want you to remember my face. I want you to remember the faces that stand in opposition. You will put us out of business. I want you to remember that when you look at the statistics years from now, when people will be so brave, and so happy about the decision that got made today. And let me tell you something about decisions. The opposition told you about how difficult it will be to pass, and how difficult this vote is. It's not difficult. It's not difficult to be political cowards. What's difficult is to stand with the common people and make a choice out of bravery, when people, when you stand in the face of opposition that seeks to oppress you, oppress my choice as an adult, oppress my choice as a bar goer, oppress my choice as a person that works at a vape shop. That takes bravery, and that, I feel, will be, in 10 years, once you look back, and you say, "I'm proud of the decision that I made. I voted in favor of choice, of the citizens that have elected me to my seat." Thank you for your time.
Councilmembers. John Hosinski, resident 617 West LaSalle, Principal Office is 502 West Washington. I, I come here as someone who has a great love of this body. I served on this council. Ironically, I used to sit in the chair that Councilman Ferlich sits in tonight. I chose not to run for reelection in 1999, because I chose to focus more on my practice of law and my obligations to my children. I have seven of them. They all hate that I smoke, okay? In fact, I look back, and I think of how things have changed in just the last 20, 25 years. I can remember in my office, behind that very wall where you sit, I used to smoke. Not under threat of law, or threat of eviction, but I get it. I think we all get it. I can't believe that I listened for over two hours to people arguing science. We get it. Smoking is bad for you. I get that from my children every day. I get that from my clients that don't like the smell of my office, that I still get to smoke in there, and I think Excise is gonna have something to say about that soon. All right? But I have seen, and I, I, nobody has a greater love of South Bend than I. My family's been here since 1852, okay? I get the arguments. Smoking's wrong, smoking's bad, but it's banned everywhere already. What are we trying to fix? It's fixed. I, I can count on one hand the places that I can go in downtown South Bend anymore, where I can have a Budweiser and a cigarette at a happy hour with a colleague after work, okay? And what I didn't see, and this is where I, I bring myself back to my practice of law, when I'm arguing a case, you have to have an aggrieved party. You have to have someone who's being damaged against their will, or has been damaged, or will be. What I haven't seen is anybody produced by anybody that is being compelled to walk into McCormick's, or being compelled to walk into the Parkview, or the Bob's on Portage. I think that's all we've got in the general area anymore. And, and thank you, Mark. But where is the emergency? We have fixed this repeatedly. When I sat on, I sat on this body with, with great members, with Roland Kelly, with Joe Surge, with, what, Mr. Forty, as our clerk at the time. But still, we knew when something needed to be fixed, and when something didn't, okay? I agree with every person in the green shirt in here. We should ban smoking everywhere, except where people in a private place of business choose to allow it, put a sign on their door, and say, "Hey, warning, we're the people that haven't gotten it yet, we haven't quit." Okay? So, everybody take it back. Thank you for your time.
Evening, council. Patrick Michael Mulligan, Mulligan Bar and Grill, 1705 South Bend Avenue. As we spoke earlier today, it really hit home with me that, not, not only speaking about my brother, some of these folks weren't here for that, but my wife and I moved to the city of South Bend, because I'm a fanatic of the University of Notre Dame. It was our choice to move here, to move to this great city. I cashed in my retirement, I cashed in everything I had. My wife and I cashed in every copper, every cent we had, and moved to this city. To make me live my dream, I'm proud of it right now. I'm proud of our business. We've worked diligently for eight years to build our customer base. Eight years. We have smokers and non-smokers. We have cigar smokers, we have doctors that come in and smoke, we have nurses that come and smoke. All blue collar workers, all walks of life come in my bar to smoke. It says, "We, we're not Chuck E. Cheese." On the door, it's 21 and up. I'm not a smoker. I'm not a smoker. Occasionally, I do have a cigar. I will tell you right now, we need to focus on, there was two shootings last night in the city of South Bend. Let's protect our police officers. Let's protect our firefighters. Let's go back to making this city, this city and this community safe. We're not bothering anybody. Nobody's bothering anybody. You have a choice to come in our bar. I know you've heard the choice nine million times. I'll say it till I'm blue in the face. The casino's coming in, it's going to be smoking. I'm all for it, I love to gamble. But I will tell you right now, you're going to kill, kill our businesses. You're going to kill us. And when that happens, I become friends with every one of these folks out here. Every one of these folks. You know what? It's a tough grind. It's a tough grind. South Bend was one of the top 10 dying cities. We're starting to flourish, things are going, things are going well. I, I said earlier, let's not reinvent the wheel, let's just appreciate the fact that it's spinning. We're taxpayers, we're taxpayers. We don't want vacant buildings. I, I, I'm just saying, you know, we talked about Indianapolis earlier, and I, I'm, obviously I'm a great sports fan. The Super Bowl was in Indianapolis, right? Indianapolis. The week that the Super Bowl was there, they lifted the smoking ban miraculously. Why was that? I don't know. They lifted it so you could smoke in all the establishments down there. I'm just saying, it's, it's, please don't tell us.
My name is Warren Dilks. I live at 1454 Garland Circle, that's South Bend, Indiana. And by that, I mean, I am not from Missouri. My family, my family's been doing business in northern Indiana and Michigan, lower Michigan, for over 70 years. We play shoeboxes and video games in the taverns that we're talking about here. I was the one that brought the comparison list of bars from Elkhart. The first response to that is, when someone said that the, that some of the bars are still open, it's not true. When a bar closes, that license is held in escrow, so he can continue to sell it. They can't leave it unoccupied, it has to be held in escrow. They said, "The one bar had closed earlier." Bar names do not necessarily correspond with the corporation name on the license. So, when I tell you, now let me rephrase here. I've been doing this myself for 43 years, okay? So my information is not anecdotal. I am the expert in this area on all this, okay? There are at least 17 vacant taverns in the city of Elkhart, none outside the city limits. As a matter of fact, OCO is going gangbusters. Gavin replied that some have opened. Yes, they have. Those licenses generally get bought up by a big corporation, but invariably, they don't bring their business downtown. They take it and they park it next to the toll road. But regardless, it's a big, a big corporation. It's a bonefish or something. They take the money and they leave town with it the next day. They don't reinvest it in town, like these people do. The fact that you consider my information anecdotal leads me to believe that a fact-finding study needs to be undertaken. There's more information you guys don't have, don't understand, and could learn from people that do do business in these areas. I want you to know that my partners and I would be happy to help with any kind of a study, to help answer some of those questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donovan Skalski, 5028 Fort Street. I'm also Finance Officer of the American Legion, Post 357 for the FAL. Been on the board for 11 years. When we first started this, how many, whatever, years ago, you guys said, "Well, you have to put in these areas where they have to be eight feet away from the building." Okay, we did that. Then the signs have to be on the door, we did that. Then we have, in our building, there's three sections. We have our canteen, which is smoking. We have two halls that are non-smoking. We had to have put in these special doors that you guys said we had to do. Cost us over $8,000. We did that. Now let's, now if you guys pass a smoking ban, that's gonna be, you know, it's ridiculous. That money, we just threw right out the window. Also, when, when we did this renovation, to put in them doors and do all the work that you guys asked us to, and one week, we went non-smoking. We lost, and I can prove it on paper, $3,861.50. I can prove it. Kevin Ferlich has never once came to our club, or called us, and we have an answering machine, never once contacted us. I can tell you that right now. You said you contacted every bar? You haven't. Also, also, right across the street, 357, our American Legion, is in the city. Right across the street, 284, is in St. Joe County. Guess what? If you pass this, guess what's gonna happen to us? I say a year, a year and a half, we will close our doors, because our customers are gonna leave us, and they're gonna walk right across the street and join that club. I guarantee you, that's what's gonna happen. And now, can, every one of you board members is gonna go to our employees, the veterans, and say, "Sorry, you're closed." You guys won't do it. We're gonna have to. So I'm asking you, I'm begging you, don't pass this bill.
I'm not a bar owner, I very rarely go to bars.
Name and address, please.
My name is Donna Lito. I live at 1236 Longfellow, right down the street from Farmer's Market. I do believe that the council has gone about this in a completely wrong way. I understand, we understand the facts. I've had several people in my family who have died-
That might, right in the middle, yep.
I've had several people in my family that died of cancer. I agree with you. My problem is this. These people have businesses. They employ people. The people who go there don't have a gun held to their head. They're adults. If you want to make this a law, and you want everybody behind you, as a government entity, you are to, you are supposed to, you're elected, you're supposed to represent us. You should have said, "Okay, if you're going to open a bar in here, Donna, you go and you want to open a bar, okay, from now on, as effective as of this day, you-" wanna open a bar, okay, from now on, as effective as of this day, you cannot have smoking in there." And then I can say, "Hmm, we'll see. Do I want to open this business or don't I?" Then I have a choice, lots of choices. Where can I go? I can do my own research and see, is this really gonna hurt me? Is it gonna help me? You went through the front door like a bull in a china shop, and you were shoving it down everybody's throat. I would've supported you. But I can't support this. I can't support the government saying, "We know what's best for you." No, you don't. No, you don't. Look at our public education. Look at our, any of the public services. Everything, nothing turns out as you promised. I don't trust you. I don't trust you to do what's right.
Rick Raskalski, 233 South Bend, CEO of Finney's Next Door, South Bend, Indiana, 46601. Before I get started, I, this won't be what you heard earlier. Earlier was one thing, this is a whole separate deal. First, I guess, right off the bat, Gavin, I have to commend you. I, I was over here thinking and I'm, and I'm watching. You're professional salesmen. I commend you for that. Terms like may and can, those are salesman terms. The secondhand smoke may cause these numbers or can cause this, those are salesman terms. These aren't exact figures. If you guys wanna know the truth, radon is seven times more likely to cause lung cancer in non-smokers than all of the secondhand smoke combined. So, let's throw numbers out there. Who's concerned about radon? How many of you have heard from Gavin Furlik? Come in, I'm sorry. How many of you back here have heard from Gavin Furlik on an answering machine, a voicemail, a visit, or anything?
No.
That's what I thought. Now I'll get started, I'm sorry. Council members, media, members of Smoke Free St. Joe, business owners and employees, and the concerned citizens of the general public, I appreciate the opportunity to exercise one of my freedoms, to speak out in opposition to this proposed ordinance. I'm here this evening to bring attention to this very important vote that faces our council. Gavin Furlik held a news conference upon the proposal of this smoking ban ordinance. During this press conference, he issued a statement that the council had enough votes to pass this legislation. He stated, "Third time's a charm." I wanna remind all that at the time of this press conference, no public hearing had been included in this.
All behind back doors.
I'm not comparing Gavin Furlik to the Castros, but dictatorship and communism started somewhere. This legislation is nothing more than a personal agenda of a select few, despite the impact it has on the many. I, along with the others, have met with various members of this council. The council members I spoke with were selected because of their willingness to hear, listen, and reason with opposition to what might even be a strong belief or moral issue for them. Not because they may be weak or persuadable. On the contrary, I would consider them the strong members of this council, willing to set aside their personal beliefs and agendas for the good of all. This proposed, proposed ordinance will not benefit anyone. The argument that it protects employees and patrons that do not have a choice but to be exposed to secondhand smoke is nothing more than smoke and mirrors. Yes, pun intended. Stereotyping bartenders, managers, owners, and patrons show the true feelings of Gavin Furlik's demeaning mentality. All of my bartenders have at least one job. Most of my bartenders have a white collar, professional career during the day and work at night to help supplement income for their personal goals and desires. My general manager is a very highly educated professional and is also a non-smoker who chooses to work at Finney's. Again, chooses is the key word. Why does Gavin Furlik and a few others on this council feel the right to dictate what is best for me and you? There's a push from Smoke Free St. Joe County and a limited few on this council to deprive the freedom of others. This is nothing more than that. They could attempt to mask it as in the interest of public health and safety. But this is a clear attack, excuse me, thank you, this is a clear attack on freedom. Freedom to choose for yourselves. Freedom of enterprise. Freedom of a privately owned business to make decisions. Freedom of the public to choose where they spend their entertainment dollars. Freedom for the individual to decide what is right for them, as opposed to you forcing it on them. Well, Gavin Furlik and a select few on this council, I stand with an army behind me to say, "Quiet no more." Your attempt to place the reins, your attempt to place the reins on free enterprise and a freedom of choice is deplorable and despicable. You have overstepped your bounds and ignored, ignored the oath and mission statement that you swore to uphold. Your work behind the scenes in an attempt to bully, intimidate, influence, and just plain pester hole will not be forgotten. Is our time complete?
No, one more, one more. Your time is up, but, um, no, your time is up, but, um, behind you.
Um, they wanna donate their time.
No, we just wanna be with you. We gotta, we gotta have one more. One more figure, one more figure. Two minutes, sir. Two, ten minutes and nine seconds. Let it roll.
Okay. All I'm asking for is don't.
I understand, I understand. Next, next, please. Anytime you take it, it's rolling. Ten minutes.
Hello, my name is Thomas Trumpay Senior. I'm the third district commander of the American Legion. I oversee the four county areas to the east, west, and south of us. We have Post 308. When they passed that state law, they went non-smoking. One year later, it went back to smoking because the bar just down the road, less than a quarter mile, almost put them out of business. You're talking about a city with cities and, and county taverns one mile away.
Okay, one minute thirty-two seconds. Hold on, one second. No, no, one minute thirty-two seconds. We gotta have the.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jason Andrew Nielsen. I'm up South Bend, 52936 Highland Drive, 46635. I spoke to you earlier today at 3 o'clock. Uh, we've been spitting facts or anecdotal facts back and forth to each other pretty much all afternoon. Uh, I've got to ask you a rhetorical question. What have you learned about my business? I am a vape shop owner. Have you learned anything? Do you know anything about vaping? You've, you've lumped this in with tobacco. You've made the, you've put us all together with tobacco. Vaping and smoking cigarettes are not the same thing. Have you learned anything? Do you, are you making an educated decision by banning vaping in public because you've lumped us in with smoking cigarettes? We are not the same thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have somebody twenty-seven seconds.
On the border, I request that you extend the speaking.
Move ahead, somebody else? Twenty-five seconds, give us a closing second. Just say your name and address and tell it.
It's a private place of public.
Name, sir.
It's not a public place.
Name, sir.
It's a public.
Name, sir. Name, Gavin, I had a, next, sir, right here. I call him by you.
Okay, my name is John Burgraff.
Time's up, sir. Thank you. Okay. I know. You gotta be. I'll let it finish. I'll let it finish. No, let, let this last one finish. Let this last one finish.
Are you thinking against?
No, against it, yes. Okay. Okay, good. My name is John Burgraff, 52187 Fur Road in Granger. Um, I've owned the bar for 26 years. Uh, I don't have it anymore. It was a smoking bar. At least I was able to walk up to this podium. But anyway, I have a petition here that I would like to have you get, there's 800 signatures online that, uh, against this, and I went to 23 bars, and I have those, I, these are copies for me, too.
Appreciate it, thank you. And that will be turned into our clerk. Okay. Um, we have Gavin Furlik, or any member of his sponsors.
Did I have one more minute?
Well, we, we finished, sir. Appreciate it. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna talk up here now for the next, uh, we have nine of us, times whatever we talk, so we got another hour here. Um, that's all, thirty minutes. Anyway, uh, no, 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 no. Yeah, uh, uh, we have Gavin Furlik that has to do rebuttal. Could you please have a seat? I appreciate you. Thank you, sir. We have no sides.
Public portion is closed.
Public portion is closed, beautiful words. Okay, now Gavin, could you please go to the mic?
Pardon the rebuttal.
Who are one of your sponsors, or both your sponsors, or anybody? Just go to the mic.
He has five minutes.
Yeah, he got here for five more minutes for Gavin's.
He's rebuttal.
He's rebuttal, he has five minutes, and then after that, we, we go down the road. We're, we're gonna start, we started that way last time. We're gonna start this way this time, work our way down, and then I'll. My name, Mr. Furlik, five minutes.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
So, from some of the data you requested.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's hear him. We don't, yes, ma'am.
She answered. She answered. You sure?
I'm just repeating what she said.
But I started that way just fine.
It's up to you.
You're the sheriff.
I, I, I was just addressing something up here, would you? Hold on one second.
That's your part, that's your part.
You're fine, in fact? Again? I started that way, you started that way, so.
Okay, cool.
We, we do apologize. We just had a little question up here on the council, but we will give Mr. Furlik his four or five minutes. We ask the audience to please be respectful, and then we will then proceed with the council portion. We'll make comments, and then we'll have, uh, some kind of decision. Mr. Furlik, go for it.
Um, Oliver, just wanted to respond to, I think you had some concerns regarding the cities and the population size. Just wanted to add that Fort Wayne is 70% of its county population, Columbus is 55%, Franklin is 16%, West Lafayette is 16%, and Zionville 23%.
Thank you.
So, a number of different examples showing different populations throughout the county. Um, Mr. Julian stated that smoking isn't that bad. From Mr., okay. Continue. The studies, the studies that we do have, the CDC study does show areas that are surrounded by areas without a ban. That's specifically the CDC study that references 216 cities in eight states. Some people are saying it's not quite comparing apples to apples, but it is. It's passing an ordinance in a city where the surrounding county and the state does not have a ban. Regarding, I guess, just say, the Indiana state law that they made some changes, again, that was not the city of South Bend that required any sort of bans of doors or anything like that, and certainly I wish the Indiana state law would've, uh, taken a step further like many states have and provided comprehensive cleanup. Again, never said anything about that the council majority was going to vote this way, anything like that. Never said third time is a charm. Um, I apologize, I shouldn't be spending time with this. But what I will close with is, the peer-reviewed data is undeniable. Secondhand smoke kills. The peer-reviewed data regarding economics is undeniable. There's a wealth of data out there that indicates that bans do not have a negative economic impact. So, again, would implore you to think about health, think about the community, and really, think about members of your community, think about members of your family that have suffered from heart disease, that have suffered from lung disease, and that have suffered from cancer. And think about how that impacted the remainder of their lives, think about how that impacted your life, think about how that impacted the community overall. The economic secondhand smoke costs our community, the city of South Bend, $20 million per year. Again, looking beyond cost, think about what cancer does to a family. Think about what lung disease and what heart disease does to a community. Uh, if we pass this ordinance, we are going to see significant reductions in lung disease, in heart disease, in cancer. And, again, all the economic data, all the economic research indicates that there will not be a negative impact on businesses.
Thank you. Um, now, can, we'll wait for Councilman Furlik to come and sit on the seat. I need everyone to take your. Okay? All right. It is time now to hear from your elected council people. Um, we started, the first comments were to my right, and we worked our way this way. In all fairness, we're gonna start on my left and work our way this way. And, um, we are going to allow you to talk. I'm not gonna put you in a minute. Just go in and share what's in your heart, and, um, we're gonna listen. Councilwoman White.
I would like to say that this is a tough issue. It has been for a number of years. When this particular ordinance came before, uh, the council, I supported it at that time. Uh, I continue to believe that it's a public health issue. I am concerned in regards to the implementation. Just recently on, yesterday, I did email the sponsors, asking them to extend the implementation time, and I, I would like to thank you for doing so. Uh, I think during that time, a lot can be done to really work with our businesses. Uh, we will always have the opportunity, uh, once we see how the ordinance will be implemented, to come back and have conversations. Uh, I think that it's very important that as we look at the city of South Bend, uh, there are 19 cities within the state of Indiana that has moved forward in this regard. Uh, it is a public safety issue. I have a number of, of family members who have been impacted. I still have a brother that smokes. Uh, he cannot smoke in my home. That's my home, I can make that decision. Uh, it's a choice.
Thank you.
It's a choice. But I'm saying that to say that, uh, I personally, uh, am concerned. I've met with, uh, businesses, will continue to meet with businesses anytime. I've been very clear on where I'm at, and I just appreciate the sponsors in extending the implementation, uh, working with, uh, the businesses, uh, trying our best to really help the businesses to make the transition. We don't want to lose any business. That is not my intent, and hopefully, by us working together, we can come up with strategies that will ensure that we will not lose businesses.
Anything else you'd like to add, what now?
I'll come back.
Okay? Again, if we, if there's something else that comes up that you need, we're gonna talk today. Okay, Councilman Furlik, any further thoughts you'd like to share that you would like to add?
No, no comments.
Seriously?
Yeah, I spoke for long enough. I think everybody understands the rest.
Okay, no problem. All right, Councilman, uh, Forty.
Um, I don't have a whole lot to say. Um, I've tried to listen, uh, and understand the concerns of both sides. Uh, I was one of the original co-sponsors. I, um, I was also one of the people who, uh, thought it was a little more tenable to, or considerably more tenable, to extend the implementation date tonight. I think I am, um, most persuaded by the comments of, uh, head of the AFL-CIO, Tony Flora. We have a responsibility to ensure that workers have a healthy, uh, workplace, and, uh, that's where I'm going to end up this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you. President Jim Scott.
Um, I, I pretty much echo exactly what Karen White has said earlier. Uh, I really don't have anything to add, other than, uh, I will stick by helping the bars if this goes forward, uh, as we talked, of any type of development that we can do.
That's all. Thank you. Um, Councilman David Varnah.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are without a doubt health issues, uh, which have been documented. There are, despite, I think, the effort to, to negate this, there will be economic consequences. I have no doubt of that, whether it's a relocation of a, uh, a, a distribution facility from South Bend, Indianapolis, whether it's the loss of a, a bar, uh, from one side of the street to the other because one has a rule and another one doesn't. And I think there will be without question, aside from economic, a loss of some businesses. Uh, I take that, I take that seriously. Uh, smoking is legal. Smoking is legal. Tobacco permits are legal. Personal property is personal property. I have no problem with what the city wants to do or the state or the county wants to do with their property. I have no issue with, with, uh, organizations, whether they're private or public, who wish to make non-smoking. My office for forty years was non-smoking. I'm not a smoker. But I sense that the constant badgering of government on personal rights issues has got to slow down or, in my mind, be halted. This is one of those... This is one of those issues that, um, is difficult for both sides. Uh, four years ago, as Mr. Furlik mentioned, and I think several years before that, we, we visited this. We tried to take into account both sides and find a solution that is workable. We adopted, four years ago, the South Bend, a requirement that all bars or entities which wish to allow smoking place a notice on their entryway. No one walks into that bar without knowing they are walking into that bar. In four years' time, I suspect with turnover and many employment issues, no one has recently been employed in a bar that does not know it is not a smoking bar and that does not accept that. They're not dragged in there, they're not forced to take a job. Another jailman mentioned there are plenty of jobs out there. Uh, if it was my office, we wouldn't smoke. If it was my house, we don't smoke. This is a personal property issue as much as a health issue. Uh, I find that it weighs more heavily for me on the personal property issue and the attempts to, uh, impose government will and government sanctions when I'm not sure they can be absolutely justified by, uh, some statistics. Yes, there will be some people who will die from secondhand smoke. Many of those folks made the choice themselves, they are adults. They can do that. Um, I don't think it's my job to legislate, uh, on behalf of every citizen, everything that may be best for them. At some point in time, you have to take responsibility for yourself. You have to choose your actions and then you live with the consequences. Uh, because of that, I, my suggestion would be that we, we simply, uh, adjourn this and, and allow the ordinance that's in effect to remain in effect and people and adults can continue to make the choices that they wish.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman, uh, Bradley?
Uh, Bradley.
Emily Turner?
Yeah. Thank you, everyone, um, for coming out tonight, uh, but most especially the individuals whom I've been able to talk to over the course of this past month. Um, I had said earlier that, um... Well, let me go this direction. Um, there's decades of health data, in my opinion. I'm not gonna walk away from that. Um, balancing individual rights, balancing, um, the right of workers, um, guaranteeing clean air for all businesses, for all employees, and all patrons, or potential patrons of those businesses. Um, how to find the middle ground and all that is where I've been trying to work. Um, I think we've got a year to get this right as a community. And that means the green shirts, the red shirts, the red shirts, the green shirts. It means as partners in city government to you who, so many of you have come here and have addressed us as local businesses and concerned that you're gonna lose your livelihood and you're going to, um, have detrimental effects to your employees, okay? Um, I don't think anyone up here takes that concern lightly. And that's why we have been working to balance good health, public policy, and to balance and to help make this transition in our community for local businesses. I guess I, um, I'm looking for partnerships on this and I'm looking for middle ground because I think that's what we do best in our city, is we work hard, we work together. Um, I'm thankful for the folks from Missouri and from downstate in Indianapolis. I'm thankful for the local coalitions of health advocates. That's my background. Okay? And I'm also a small business owner. So I need, I guess I'm asking, I, I have confidence in, in making this tough decision because I believe we can partner and get this right. And we've written in a year to do it. We've given that soft landing ability for people. Is it gonna be tough? Yeah, it can be. Can we walk away from the business that you've been pick, uh, supporting and going to for your smoke? Yeah, you can walk away and go across the street. That's your, that is your choice. Okay? If it's out of the county, all right? You can make that choice. This is about, in my opinion, safe working environments across the board. So I'm not interested in carving out retail. I'm not, and I am interested in pushing this issue countywide. So as a legislator, I'll make the vote tonight and I'll also advocate additionally beyond tonight, not only to help support businesses make this change, but also to go to the other elected bodies in, and I ask you all to do the same. Okay? So, um, I think as, as we look at this going forward, I have been informed by conversations from employees, from people who are excluded from employment because they don't choose to work in these environments. Okay? I have also benefited from the advice of business owners, your bar, your bar, your bar owners. I've, tonight benefited from information from, from the fella and the gentleman there. However, that can continue. That can continue across all of us council members to continue, um, to soften the impact of this. We don't need to lose businesses in the city of South Bend. And I don't, and I don't think this vote is gonna, uh... We don't need to, we don't need to, this is a, this is a choice.
We got you. Let it finish, let it finish, please.
This is a, um, I guess I'm looking to keep everybody's feet to the fire on this. We've got advocacy groups, we've got legislators who can work across other peers, peer legislatures within, within our county. If there's an adverse effect because somebody can go to the county, let's work on that as a community. But the overall writing reason why I am voting in favor of this and why I have shared that outside individually to other council members is because of the health benefits that I think can accrue from this to our community and because of everyone's individual to work in a free, clear, air environment.
We need to... And the actual, uh, oh, oh. And I just wanna make sure you...
Just real briefly.
Hold on a second. I wanna make sure that the only one that I agree with.
Yeah.
You finished?
Thank you.
Okay, well, Councilman...
Thanks, Oliver. Um, I think as a co-sponsor of the bill, everybody knows where I stand.
Do you need a microphone?
For me, uh, for me, it's also, uh, primarily a public health issue. I, uh, agree with Mr. Flora and Mr. Vorty's comments, uh, about, um, this being about workplace safety. And I appreciate Gavin Furlik taking this on and, um, obviously, it's been a long haul for him and for everybody else involved. I also appreciate Dr. Varner's, uh, comments. Uh, he talked about choice. And, and the reality is, what we haven't really talked about much, um, is the fact that we all already subsidize smokers. We subsidize all smokers through, uh, increased insurance premiums, Medicare, Medicaid taxes, um, higher medical costs. We already do that. And that's the cost of living in a free society. Uh, we do it already. Um, and I'm willing to do that, even though I'm not a smoker. Um, so for me, uh, you know, there's, there's, that impacts all of us. Um, so for me, it's about public places. Just, again, anecdotally, we've talked, have you heard that word anecdotal, huh? Um, my father, uh, was diagnosed with lung cancer more than twenty years after he had quit smoking. And this was before workplace bans were put in place. Um, he was one of the lucky ones. Because I think far fewer than twenty percent of people, uh, who were diagnosed with lung cancer lived more than five years. He did. Uh, but then subsequently also had heart disease. Um, and again, that was, uh, attributable to secondhand smoke because he had quit sometime before, before these bans were in place. Um, so again, we, uh, we're paying for smokers and their increased healthcare already. But again, I believe that's the cost of a free society. But I think the line should be drawn, as Mr. Flora pointed out, Mr. Vorty, the line should be drawn, um, in public places. And I think that's all I have to say.
Anything else? You should. You finished? Okay. Governor Natty, Councilwoman Regina Williams-Preston?
Um, I think I've learned a lot.
Pass it to you.
Closer. Really? Y'all can't hear me? My goodness.
I'm not sure.
Um, I've learned a lot and I wanna thank everybody for their comments. Uh, I've spent a lot of time online, uh, a fair amount of time talking to my peers, my colleagues up here. Um, you know, this is my first, I know some of y'all have been talking about this for years, but, you know, I've, I've just kinda gotten into this conversation. So I've learned a lot. It was a, a steep learning curve. But I can't, uh, really help but know and feel that, that there's still so much more to learn about this issue. Um, one of my first concerns has to do with enforcement. Um, as an educator, as a teacher in my classroom, I never make a rule that I can't be consistent with. And this is a, a law, I mean, to me, as a lawmaker, a good lawmaker, doesn't pass laws that you can't enforce. And when I look at these things, like, okay, well, complaint-driven, is that really what we wanna do? We really wanna be telling on each other like that? Um, when we talk about code and police, I think it's already been said. We have so many more issues that are more pressing than, um, you know, is somebody in their private space, um, lighting up a cigarette? Um, I just think that there, there must be better ways to promote health. I'm one hundred percent behind that in terms of we have to have a healthy community. I don't believe that, uh, forcing people not to smoke in spaces that are their own is the way to do that. Kinda where I am right now. Um, and when I talk, I think one of the most important things is, you know, when I'm, I, I talk to the people that I represent. First of all, one of the things that strike, that, that was really striking is so many people in my district don't even know this is happening. Is it on TV? Yes. Is it on the news, I mean, the newspaper? Yes. You know, are we all talking about it? Yes. But I found myself, uh, in front of people who, who had never really thought about it before. And I can, I can, you know, I can, I, I can understand that because, again, I had never thought about it before. I consider myself somewhat, you know, connected. So, um, I think it's really important that as elected officials, we have a chance to truly understand what the people that elected us want. And through this process, I was really, um, taken by, you know, the online comments. Um, there was so much response. I think this gentleman said there were eight hundred signatures tonight against this bill.
Eight hundred and twenty.
Eight hundred and twenty. Um, I think we can't ignore that. Um, I think people are trying to speak to us and we need to try to listen to that more. Um, also around the issue of health, and I think I had this conversation with some of my green shirt friends. A lot of my friends are in the green shirts too. That's like a whole nother thing. I know a lot of you folks. Yeah, I'm with you, okay? Um, and I've had this conversation in terms of, you know, um, well, let's just talk about, uh, fifty-six percent of people in poorish township. It's one of my favorite, well, not favorite, but one of the most important, um, statistics. Fifty-six percent of people living in poorish township live at or below the poverty line. And why is that important? Because when I talk to people, uh, in my district, people that I know that are living in these situations, the issues that drive them or, you know, these young kids who are starting smoking, they're stressed out. They're depressed. They have various different mental health issues because of their situations. I think we really, if we're concerned truly about the health issue, and I'm not sure people will disagree, that we need to really go at the underlying causes of why are people smoking and work on those things. And it has to do with education and it has to do with jobs. I mean, those are other things that we are responsible for as well. And so I think that there is a better way to address the health issue and make sure that we're a healthy, smoke-free community, um, than saying, "We're just not gonna let you smoke." Um, personally, I'm a non-smoker. Don't go to bars. Uh, but really, my vote tonight is not about me. It's about the people I represent. And so, for whatever reason, I think that we really need to take some time and increase the engagement on this issue. We need to increase education and we need to have the opportunity, more opportunity, to hear all the voices and, and look at that research and share that research out. Because I think when people do have that information, I think they will make good choices. And we don't have to legislate it. Um, I just don't think that's the right way. So, my feeling is, I think we do really need to look at this, take some time, um, do a little more study. And, and that has to do with, even though this has been talked about forever, you know, things change. We have a casino coming. That's different than it ever was before. Uh, vaping is a new thing. I, I think I don't know everything I need to know about the difference between smoking and vaping. Um, I wanna know more about L. Cart. Um, that's really compelling. You know, I, I can appreciate the studies, you know, all over and, and those things, whenever the studies were done and whatever cities, but I wanna know what happened right next door. And I wanna make sure, again, I love the, the idea of due diligence. It's my job to make sure that we don't end up in that same situation if indeed that's what's happened. I don't know. I've heard, you know, testimony on both sides. I think I need to know more. And then this issue of exemptions, I'm not sure. I thought I heard somebody say that, that all these other cities in, in Indiana has exemption. That's what I thought I, I heard. So I wanna understand, why do we have to do that? Why do we have to be the most restrictive? And, and I have to say that, um, you know, I agree with, with, uh, with Councilwoman Broden about the importance of partnerships. You know, I wanna see the green shirts and the red shirts. I wanna see some rainbow shirts next time. And, you know, but I, there, there is middle ground. We can work together, but we don't pass a law and then try to partner. I think we need to work on that partnership, work on that connection and that understanding, and work with Ms. Walker and work with the county. I wanna do that work now, before I pass the law. Because to me... So, um, tonight, that's what I'm looking for. I, I, I love that idea. I want partnership. I want community. I wanna connect and, and I'm interested in doing that. If we're willing to implement in a year, great. Let's take that year right now, before we pass it, and work on those partnerships. Then maybe a year from now, we can figure out something that works for everybody, even those maybe who are not the young professionals, but the young unprofessionals.
And you'd like to talk?
Well, it's my turn to share my thoughts. Um, there was a statement that said, "Five years from now, ten years from now, we'd be happy about the decision we made." Four years ago, in two thousand and twelve, I saw that by us in the South Bend County Council passing a more restrictive law than the state already, that that would have already solved the issue. We did, Dr. Varner made the recommendation, it'd be second, I don't know who remember second it, but those of us who were in the councils, uh, there's, uh, three of us, yeah, you, five of us who are still here, uh, so, um, that were here that time. And Dr. Varner, uh, made that motion and we then moved forward. You all made the changes. We moved forward. Then, we kept coming back. My concern on that is, will we continue to come back after this? My concern on that is, will we continue to come back after this? Because at two thousand and twelve, we had put your restrictions in, you made your changes, you paid your monies, you, you not only dealt with state law, you made changes for city law, and then we came back. So it was, it was a misnomer to say that this council has not passed more restrictive laws than the state. We've already done that. Okay? I voted for that. Dr. Varner led that, you know, led that issue. Tonight, when I was thinking about, um, what my comments were going to be, I remember a couple of years ago, I talked about alcohol and diet and, you know, vegetarianism, and I don't, I'm a vegetarian, I don't force my diet on you. Uh, it would be a completely different issue here tonight if we were sitting up here outlawing alcohol in the city of South Bend. I think we may have some representatives from Notre Dame football here, and a few others here, sitting up here, and the basketball, and everybody else sitting here, if we were going outlaw alcohol. And I could tell you how many friends and family members, my uncle and the funeral I've already attended, from people who died of alcohol. Alcohol is a health issue, okay? And more African-Americans, there was me, but more African-Americans, so my friends over here on this side, had been, our eating issues have killed us more than smoking. You look at where we are, hypertension and all that comes from eating, the heart, all that kind of stuff, our chitlins and everything else. I want to go down that, that homeless stuff food, okay? I'm a southern, I didn't know what grandma had in that kitchen, bless her heart, and rest her soul. But anyway, um, the reason I brought out, um, we're not going to pass outlaw alcohol, so we don't, I don't want to go down that list. Uh, I brought Marion County, Indianapolis, you heard me talk about ninety-two percent. Somebody said ninety-two percent. Who said ninety-two percent? Somebody who said ninety-two percent. The reason I talked about that was Indianapolis, we've been hearing a lot about Indianapolis law. Ninety-two percent of Marion County is covered by that law. That means they only have to compete against eight percent of the rest of the county. One hundred minus ninety-two equals eight, right? So they only have to compete against eight percent of their county. That's it. Fort Wayne, one hundred minus seventy percent equals thirty. So they only have to compete against thirty percent of their county, right? That's what it is. If we pass this law tonight, or any time this year, we're only looking at forty percent. We still have the casino coming, and monies will be coming to South Bend to take care of all the taxes and everything else, which is cool. Um, forty percent, we have the casino in that part of the tribal land, we have St. Joe County. That really affects on the southwest side too, because we have those two businesses you talked about, that right across the street from each other. Then we have Mishawaka, then we have St. Joe County. So our businesses in South Bend will have to compete, it's almost less than forty percent when you look at the population, but they're going to have to compete against the other sixty percent of the county. That's a, that's a huge difference. That's why, uh, I'm just looking at Indiana numbers. I'm not looking at New Zealand and all those other places and around the world, please. I mean, we're talking right here, I live here. I pay my taxes here. I go to sleep in this county, you know? Till my daughter, when I die, bury me here, okay? So therefore, this is the place of seventy percent in Fort Wayne, ninety percent, and we're going to put this unfair advantage on our, our businesses here. Yet we're supposed to be promoting the new South Bend, this new place where all the young people come. Why have the people been here? Who been living here? You know, we always want to recruit all these other folk, and then run the older folk here who have mom and pop shops for years? We're going to run them out of here? That's ridiculous. You know, and so my, my, I just have a hard time dealing with that. This is the largest city to not have a mall. Because this council, years ago, didn't see the vision that's, uh, Mishawaka saw, okay? And Great Road is a whole different change. That Great Road should have been solved then. We don't go there. You know, that's history, but that's the truth. Therefore, implementation, um, we're all due respect to Saint, uh, Smoke-Free St. Joe County. Your name says Smoke-Free St. Joe County. The county has the health department. Elkhart County has the health department. Marion County has the health department. Not the city of Mishawaka, not the city of South Bend. Your mission is St. Joe County. But I don't see this crowd over in, in Mishawaka. I don't see that crowd over there. Um, um, and your hospital left South Bend, where y'all getting a lot of your money from, and where you getting your jobs from and getting your pay from, y'all left South Bend, and y'all moved over to Mishawaka, okay? But that's why I, I like the other hospital here, but moving forward, okay? And so therefore, in your own city, where you all are, y'all ain't even touching them. They, they all, that county already, that council said, "No way." I already talked to one of their major persons, he said, "That's not coming here, they ain't passing it." I see the president of our St. Joe County, bless your heart there. And so, I mean, I know you'll see some of the other ones there, but, uh-uh, I, I don't know. So my point to you is, the implementation, if y'all were going to do that, you promised, uh, Mr. Nichols, four years ago, and three years ago, that you were going to work with these people here, to market with them, to set up these, I've heard the same speech, you were going to do that. But my concern comes in this. Have you all worked with any of these local bars to help them go smoke-free? To help them? What is your success record in marketing? I mean, basically, you said to me tonight that they're not going to lose any business. If you don't know there's a problem, how are you going to help them to correct a problem? If you don't know they potentially may lose money, how would you help them to raise money? That doesn't make, if you don't, if you don't know that I heard, when people come to me, and I don't know they heard, how can I, how can I counsel them? So that's a question I have. Um, South Bend Tribune shocked me, but then they didn't shock me, when they said, "There's no new information to be learned." Uh, we've already discussed this issue for five years. I said to myself, "Do I need to, um, stop my subscription?" Because if our editorial board has run out of information and new thoughts, why do I need to subscribe to their paper? Because of the fact that, um, to me, education is an ongoing process. I have friends who are ninety years old and a hundred years old, and they still learn something different. And they said, "There's no, nothing new?" Well, tonight, we learned about a tobacco companies. There's eight of them here. I didn't know that they had eight companies here and all the tax dollars that they had. Uh, in our last discussion, we never checked the record. We never even brought the issue of vaping. I don't think anybody ever talked about vaping until that's good. Okay, so that's a new issue. The council wasn't even close to being here a few years ago. That's a new issue. The data on Elkhart County, uh, that was not here, um, a few years ago, that's a new issue. I'm not even on the editorial board, and I picked all this up, okay? Um, I don't know if that editorial board, ninety percent, ninety-two percent of Indiana was already covered, and they had to compete against, I already shared all that. That's a new issue. Okay? The issue regarding fifteen feet. I've been to these bars, okay? I don't know some points like Julius is going to be sitting up there right there on the corner there on Ford, and then they come up fifteen feet without getting hurt on the street. And then at this time of night, where bars go out, okay? You're going to ask somebody, "Cassie, your cup, please. Your snorkel, okay? Thanks." Okay? You're going to ask somebody who's drinking. I don't drink, so, but just save this out of alcohol, okay? I got some Pepsi in there. I'm going to drink. Okay? This is my cigarette. Okay? Now, because I got to smoke because of this room, I got to go out and leave my cup right over here. Do you see that? Um, I like Mr. Scott. Let Mr. Scott put your hand right over there, please. Thank you. Just look at his hand. Now, over here, I'm out here at fifteen feet, in the dark, way over here. You can't see me now, I'm out here. You can hear me, I'm in the parking lot. Mr. Scott, you put that in there? Thank you. Mr. Scott is putting something in my drink. You're putting something in my drink, y'all. Now, y'all worried about health, okay? You're worried about health. Okay? Now, okay? May, maybe he and I just had an argument, all right? Just had a bad argument, okay? Sorry, Mr. Scott, I know, you, you're cool, you wouldn't do that, but, you know, you're Mr. Hot. But now, you just put something in the drink. All right? I come back in, after being outside. Ah, it's good. I've just tasted my death, because somebody has put that in my drink. I know people who got messed up because they got something put in their drink. Okay? I worked, I'm a therapist, so I work in the health. People who were pretty decent, somebody messed up their drink, got that. Now we risking people's health, because people smoke and drink. Smoke or drink? Smoke, smoke, drink. They don't necessarily have to leave their stuff and smoke way over here and drink way over there. You got my point, y'all? That's a health issue. But legality issue. Um, we have an issue here with, um, Councilman Troy talking about the severe, what's that severe, how do you say that clause? Statuality clause, thank you. I went to search for it graduate school, he's a philosopher, but I do understand that clause. The fact that they put that in is a concern for me, because it almost forces you to say, "Well, this council has dealt with it enough. We're going to send this to the judge now, because y'all are going to have to take this legal action, and we'll let the judge decide, and who may just decide to keep the vaping, throw y'all out, and then get the bars." We all throw it over there. And I, it's almost turning this thing into a legal matter, which is really concerning me, that now, I told people, "If you come in now, we're going..." They've already said the six votes, I did hear the six votes, and were already here ahead of time. I did hear those statements. And that was a great concern to me, because it killed the public trust. But I saw it all over the place. So people already announced, "We only got six votes, we already got a stack, okay, you're done. Don't want to show up here, why vote for us? We're public officials, you need to know." I should, y'all should be able to convince me, I taught this stuff in debate class, that I should be able to walk in here and hear a debate, and that can be changed, because this is public, okay? And I got to listen to folk. And personal rights, I don't want my personal rights done. Last pieces that I got to deal with, um, unfair advantage, I'm concerned because my district, the sixth district, is closest to where the Polk Hagan area will be, across the street from where they would be. I got Lonnie sitting right there. Polk Hagan sitting right here on the corner. I got Lonnie sitting right there. I got a concern with that. On this side of my district, I got your two, the A's, what's that, um, American League? Right next to them. Right now, they get along, now we're going to create a problem. I got unfair advantage on that side. I've also been sharing, and others have told me on the other side, they got Mishawaka sitting right across from them. I got unfair advantage issues. I know legally you can say, "Well, all the businesses in South Bend are not affected." But we don't live in Indianapolis, where they have that ninety-two percent. We don't live in, uh, Fort Wayne, where they have the seventy percent. Sorry, guys, I'm moving my hands too much. Uh, we live here, where we got that forty percent. Take a look at these guys and ladies. They work at bars. Now, I'm going to tell you something. When I hear students asking what they're going to be when they grow up, they may say doctor, teacher, lawyer. I rarely run into people who say they want to be a bar owner. Sometimes we look at bar owners as a second-class type of a citizen. Sometimes even third-class. They deal with tobacco, ugh. Alcohol, ugh. When people got problems, ugh. Really, they my competition as a counselor. When people first have problems, they go over to them before they come to me. You know, and so, really, when you have a recession, y'all, and Elkhart, more recession, you're going to have more business. Okay, that's what happens. People have more rough times, they come to counseling. But the thing about it is this, when we come down to this, they're second-class citizens a lot of times. They're not the folk who always drive the big cars and, and all that kind of stuff. That's how we treat them. But what would happen if anybody tonight, and those red shirts? What were, if they had that front row, was the president of Notre Dame asking us for a study commission? What if it was the, um, president of the Chamber of Commerce, business, asking us for a study commission? What would it be if, why didn't we seek right there, instead of it being Mr. Malacan, it was somebody who owns Four Source Bank, or owns TCU? What if they were asking this council? When we had a different type of a crowd, that was more into the nature crowd, and more into the aesthetics and everything else of life, we didn't rush to judgment. We created an Elbow, thanks, the lights are coming on now, we may see some more power in here. Uh, we didn't rush to judgment. We created the Elbow Commission. That was cool. For my friends over here, in two thousand and five, this community was going crazy because of the fact that we didn't know where Dr. King's street was going to be. And we got mad at that little block that it's on, because nothing's there. Dr. King was a smoker too, by the way, but moving forward. Anyway, uh, the whole thing is this, um, on that street, we got mad about that. Eleven years later, we still dealing with that. And this council took the time to put a, a committee together. We couldn't put a committee together for Elbow, okay? A lot of those people who spoke that night were from Notre Dame, and talked about their PhDs and all the good, good research they did. It was amazing working with that crowd. They could write letters to this editor with beautiful, highfalutin words. They were nice. We put a study commission together for that, and one of my, this members of this council are, are working on that. The staff of the community said, "That's not a fair comparison. Elbow just happened." I said, "No, it didn't. I've been on this council for nine years." Those issues started coming up, you can see, they were working on getting rid of Elbow for some time, so, but we slowed it down, that was going on. Okay? That just didn't happen. So we put a committee together, okay? We got to treat people, if we're going to treat the people in Elbow that way, we got to treat everybody that way. If we're going to treat the folk who were working with Dr. King, and we gave a committee, Dr. King, you know, he's gone, bless his heart, and, but we still sitting up there trying to figure out, should we do Dr. King, should we do Satan's Street, should we do Prairie? We're taking the time for that. That's eleven years that we've been dealing with that issue, but we still put a committee together. I've heard my colleagues say, "Well, this has been five years that we've been working on it, and we're tired of it." If people are too tired of it, my dear colleagues, even those ten, fifteen at night, if we too tired of it, then maybe we not should be on this council. We have to be here and stay here and work here, whether we tired or not. That's what we committed ourselves to do. And we have to put a committee together, because in my closing words, it is ridiculous for us to have a rush to judgment. You know, we just, we just can't have that rush to judgment. We have to win your public trust. If there's already six votes, and it's already going to start in January one, I like what my colleague said, "Let us work, and try to have green and red come together prior to a vote, and then put that together, and then we may make another third amendment, uh, and we may come back and make some more changes, okay? And then we make that, let's not pass something, and then say we're going to work together, because then the trust is gone. You can't work for somebody after the divorce, okay? You really can't. I mean, after the, I've been there, okay? After the divorce is over, you don't want to sit in the stadium for more than five seconds, okay? You divorced me on, on that day? No. You have to have mediation to another side. All y'all trying to know that. So you talk before the divorce. Okay? That's what I do with my families. I don't want to talk to them after divorce, they, they ready to shoot, all right? Before the divorce, you talk. And then both people can make a better educated decision about the kids, the families, the wills, the monies, who's going to get what, who's going to get this, how to go handle grandma. I mean, cool. That's what I want us to do, not have a rush to judgment tonight. I thank you, and I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to send this to a special committee to study the issue.
Okay? Do you have a motion? We have a second. Could you repeat your motion loud and clear, please?
Um, I move that the council send this issue to a special committee to study the issue.
Okay, and Dr. Who, to the, on second?
I think it would need create and send it to a special committee.
To create?
Would be the call for it.
To create?
We don't, I think, most of the, probably need to be create a special committee.
Create a special committee to?
Assign it to that committee, um, otherwise it would go to, well, it can go to a standing committee, Health and Public Safety, I assume. But if you're talking about a special committee, you would wanna, yeah.
Okay, I move to create a special committee to study this issue. And that we would actually send this to that committee for, uh, some determined number of months to, um, learn more, and then make a recommendation to the council.
Okay, Dr. Run, is that what you're talking about? I was talking about, okay. All righty, does everybody here on the council, whoever understands what, um, Councilwoman Williams-Preston and Dr. Dave Varner have, um, made, are we all clear? Okay, all clear on that side. Okay? I, I'd like to, instead of doing all in favor and all that kinda stuff, I'd like for our city clerk to, uh, take her, um, uh, vote. Roll call vote. On that motion.
Councilmember Preston?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, are you calling for, low?
Second, she called for your second, any, any, okay.
Second, sorry, did second.
You know, did second it. Hold a second. Um, excuse me, uh, just for the, to clarify, somebody asked, once has been seconded, do you, or where are we with, with discussion, or what's that, um?
There was not a call for question, you did call for a call.
Okay, thanks, just to clarify, anybody who, you needed that? Go ahead, um, Council, um, City Clerk, Kareema Fowler.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Randy Kelly?
Nay.
Councilmember Broton?
Nay.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Wardy?
Nay.
Mr. Furlet?
Nay.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Tim Scott?
Nay. Like to make a motion to send this to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Okay, Council, um, City Clerk. Roll call, yes, roll call.
Randy Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Probably same name.
Mr. Wardy?
Aye.
Mr. Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Nay.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, six ayes. I'm looking to, um...
Kareema, that was, that was five before, not six to three, wasn't it?
Yes, five to four, five.
Pardon me?
Five ayes and four nays. No, actually, it's six. The vote before that.
Motion to resolve and approve.
Can we clarify that, just for the audience?
The prior vote for the, uh, study committee was five four.
Okay.
The vote to, uh, pass it, to send it, Traver Bully is six three.
Right, okay.
Okay, um, just for the clarification of the people, this is the, uh, committee of the whole. Um, there'll be one final vote left on this in a second, um, it would be done, um, right after this. We have two, um, resolutions to pass, and then after that, this is gonna have one more final vote. Okay?
It's immediate.
And so, it comes right there, so we're looking at within the, um, what, fifteen minutes, ten minutes?
No.
Five minutes, two minutes. Two minutes, one minute, let's go with it.
Motion to? Yeah, motion to?
We're not doing that old joke from that then.
Motion resolved in the committee at all.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's go. Now we're going with the final vote. Okay, go.
Full, council is now back in session. Uh, Kareema Fowler, would you give third reading to Bill eleven sixteen, please?
Third reading on a bill, eleven sixteen, third reading on in ordinance of the South Bend County Council amending chapter fourteen of the South Bend Municipal Code by establishing new article thirteen entitled Smoke Free Air Regulations for Workplaces and Public Places.
Motion to defeat.
Second.
Kareema, roll, please.
Motion to defeat, Councilmember Broton?
Aye, post that. Nay.
Is it nay?
Nay.
Nay, huh. Dr. Varner?
Aye.
President Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Wardy?
Nay.
Mr. Furlet?
Nay.
Councilmember White?
Nay.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Randy Kelly?
Nay.
Motion to send to, um...
Tim Scott?
Nay. Motion for passage.
No, motion to amend this.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No, 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 you gotta do roll call, not all.
No, you do not.
Motion for passage.
Hold on a minute, we will do roll call, because it was confused.
I appreciate it.
Let's all slow down, please, everybody will have their chance to speak.
Thank you.
So, it is, the motion is to amend as committee in the whole. Roll call, Ms. Fowler, please.
Dr. Varner?
Nay.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Mr. Wardy?
Aye.
Mr. Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Nay.
Randy Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Motion to have a committee?
Three to six.
Motion for passage.
Second.
I hate to, I got him there before him. I know.
Hold on a minute.
I beat him on that one, I'm sorry.
Hold on a minute. Oliver made a motion to send a committee, which we cannot do at this point, it's either passed or not.
Motion for passage.
Second.
Ms. Fowler, motion, motion is to pass eleven sixteen, roll call, please.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Mr. Wardy?
Aye.
Mr. Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Nay.
Randy Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Nay.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Six to three, motion to pass.
Thank you, we will now move on to resolutions. Could you please give reading to sixteen thirty, thank you.
Don't do that, don't do that, don't do that.
Mr. Oliver Davis, we still have, we still have resolutions. Take out! Take out! Hope you die slow, miserable, death to Canada! Hope you're proud of yourself, all you, ain't no good, that's my house, my dislocation. You guys are disgusting, you're just crazy, United States of America! We still have two resolutions to go, if you would like to stay, please stay, but be respectful, if not, we'll give it a couple minutes to clear the room. Just one moment, we were getting ready to, uh, hear Bill eleven sixteen, we're just waiting for the room clerk. I'm sorry, sixteen thirty, resolution sixteen thirty. I just want to remind everybody, uh, we still have two, um, pieces of business left, please be respectful and quiet. Ms. Fowler, would you please give reading to resolution sixteen thirty?
Sixteen thirty, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana correcting a Scrivener's error in resolution number forty-five thirty-seven dash sixteen approving, approving the designation of certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana commonly known as two eleven West Washington Street as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a ten-year real property tax abatement for retail property located at the Tower of Washington Square LLC.
There's a report from committee.
Yes, Community Investment Center, for favorably.
Thank you, presenter.
Good evening, Council Brian Polowski, Assistant Executive Director, Community Investment, fourteenth floor of this building. Uh, minor matter here, we were off by one digit on the tax ID, so here, uh, with a resolution to correct that, I do have a petitioner here, uh, with Mark Neal, if there are any questions.
With the petitioner, just make a brief statement. Very brief.
Mark Neal with Bradley Company, offices at, uh, one twelve West Jefferson Boulevard, Suite three hundred, here in South Bend. Uh, as, uh, Brian Mr. Polowski noted, uh, there was a, an error in the numbering of the parcel IDs when they were issued, uh, and this is a correction of just this one property, the retail property for the, uh, Tower Washington Square Building.
Thank you, anyone from council have any questions? Seeing, uh, we'll turn it over to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor of sixteen thirty, please come to the podium. Seeing, uh, anyone wishing to speak against sixteen thirty, please come to the podium. Back to council.
Move for the adoption of resolution sixteen thirty?
Second.
Ms. Fowler, roll call, please.
Mr. Wardy?
Aye.
Mr. Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Randy Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Absent.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Sixteen thirty-one, please.
Sixteen thirty-one, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as intersection of Mayflower Road and Western Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one nine as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a six-year real property tax abatement for County Development LLC.
Committee report.
Community Investment Center, this far, favorably.
Thank you, presenter.
Councilor Gandy, Brian Polowski, Assistant Executive Director, Community Investment, offices on fourteenth floor of this building. Uh, nothing new to add from this afternoon, the numbers there in front of you, just some highlights I would share in addition to those. Basically talking about a new, uh, new construction facility, about six point eight million dollars, uh, forty thousand square foot supermarket store, uh, as well as, uh, convenience store and some fuel business there as well. Uh, estimated total taxes on the new building construction only are one point one eight million. Uh, estimated taxes to be abated are four hundred sixty-four thousand, and estimated taxes to be paid, uh, during the six-year, uh, abatement are seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Additionally highlighted, you see there thirteen, uh, permanent position, that excludes the thirty current that already exist in the existing store, these are thirteen new jobs that will add an additional payroll of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately, bringing the total for the thirty jobs that exist now, as well as the thirteen new that will come online, to just, uh, just over one point three million. Um, that's a look at the numbers I have in petitioner here, and Mr. Rob Bartles.
Sir, would you, brief, very brief statement?
Briefly, you bet, Rob Bartles, uh, seven six zero, Catter Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one three. We are excited about this project, uh, a lot of time and talent has gone into getting it done. Uh, what we're looking for is abatement to help us handle some costs that are off-site and improve the area. Uh, we look forward to bringing the store the West Side deserves, and this is an important part of that piece. Any questions?
Thank you, council, any questions?
Thanks.
Seeing, uh, we'll turn it over to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor of sixteen thirty-one, please come to the podium. Seeing, uh, anyone wishing to speak against sixteen thirty-one, please come to the podium. Turn it back to council?
Move for adoption.
Second. Ms. Fowler?
Mr. Wardy?
Aye.
Mr. Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Randy Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Absent.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, we will go to first readings, please, eighteen sixteen.
Eighteen sixteen. First reading on in ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana amending chapter two, article one of the South Bend Municipal Code by deleting section two dash nine point one addressing policies and procedures governing city-owned technologies, Facebook standards, social media, and social networking policies and procedures.
Entertaining motion, send this to IT for four eleven.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Nineteen sixteen, please.
Nineteen sixteen, first reading on in ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana to address buskers and sidewalk performers by repealing chapter four, art, article four, section four dash twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code recodifying and amending it within a new article thirteen of chapter fourteen. New sections fourteen dash one, one, two, three through fourteen dash one twenty-six of the municipal code and further amending chapter thirteen, article twelve, section thirteen dash twenty-six concerning facilitation.
Entertaining motion to send this to help public safety for four eleven.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Anything under unfinished business from council? Seeing, uh, new business, seeing, uh, we will move to privileged floor. Privileged floor, this is where individuals wish, who wish to address the council will state their name and address, residential address. Individuals are limited to three minutes only, maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting shall be thirty minutes. Individuals may address only issues over which the city has jurisdictions. Individuals shall not be permitted to address any topic to the council that was previously heard on the agenda tonight. Therefore, no smoking, no Martin's supermarket, no Chase Tower. As president of council, I may assign the topic raised by individuals during the privileged floor, appropriate council member, and/or request the city clerk to contact either the city administration or review comment. If you want, go ahead.
Jerry King, seven thirty North Hill Street, South Bend. Council, Lieutenant Scott, council members, with no disrespect intended to the designers of the new flag described in bill zero seven sixteen, or to the members of the selection committee, is it incumbent upon me, as a participating citizen of this community, to bring following to your attention? Whereas the South Bend Common Council on November tenth, twenty sixteen, adopted resolution forty-five oh nine fifteen encouraging public participation in the flag design contest to provide an opportunity for our community to proudly display its love of South Bend in the dynamic, creative, and symbolic way and to develop a new symbol to unify residents and to speak to visitors and for generations to come. And whereas the post entry rule suggests that all flag design proposals include South Bend symbolic visual or design representations of four citywide themes, the river, connectivity, ethnically diverse heritage and innovation. And whereas the proposed design described in bill seven sixteen includes a red star with an explanation that the six points of that star represent the city's six council districts, a concept not mentioned in the four citywide themes. And whereas the aforementioned star duplicates a star emblazoned on the flag of the city of Chicago originally adopted in nineteen seventeen, and in its present form nineteen thirty-three, and no other city flag in the United States includes such a star. And whereas resolution forty-five oh nine fifteen, along with the rules, require that entries must be in keeping with the North American Vexiological Association's five basic principles. The flag design is further detailed in the website, southbendonefifty.com/flag. And whereas the aforementioned resolution document states that, as principle two, use meaningful symbolism. The flag's images, colors, or patterns should relate to what it symbolizes. Furthermore, the document states, as principle five, be distinctive or be related. Avoid duplicating other flags, but use similarities to show connections. And whereas the aforementioned star is not designated as a generally symbolic of cities or any geopolitical district, and it duplicates a unique element of the Chicago flag which could lead an observer to imagine South Bend's intention to be seen as a satellite of Chicago. And whereas the theme of ethnically diverse heritage is not represented by any of the proposed flag elements, and the theme of innovation is not appropriately represented by a symbol which itself is not innovative. And whereas council resolution forty-five oh nine fifteen, section three mandates, the final flag design selected by the representatives of South Bend One Fifty Celebration Committee must be consistent with the entry rules, thematic elements to include colors, five basic principles of flag design. And whereas the proposed design does not comply with those specifications, nor the stated goal of developing a city flag which captures the spirit of our city's past. Whereas section four, stated upon, final flag design be selected, an ordinance, property of vending... of lending, will be required to be filed.[1678.36]